A call to order the meeting of the Malibu Planning Commission for April 20th, 2020. For 202020. Obviously, this meeting is being conducted remotely. And we are still in the process of learning the Zoom. Procedure and so we appreciate everybody's patience. All the planning commissioners and city staff are in remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. I've got a supposed to be telling you that members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. Is that still true or is that not? Aloud.
You can view the meeting by going to that that website and then clicking on the Zoom meeting. It's not being broadcast due to technical difficulties with YouTube. So if anyone wants to participate, they need to go on and sign into the Zoom meeting.
Okay, and when they get to the Zoom meeting, then they have to sign in. If they want to speak on a particular item, they have to sign in, right? Is that still operative? The instructions I was supposed to give? And and you have to sign, you have to sign in to speak prior to the item being called. So. Here we go, we're gonna try to do our best commissioners as always. I think we're learning a lot about Zoom apart from this meeting, but one of the worst. One of the problems with it is that everybody has to speak one at a time. Once you start talking over each other, it becomes completely untouchable. So with that, we'll get started. Kathleen, will you call the roll, please? Or not?
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Uring.
Here.
Commissioner Wile.
Here.
Vice Chair Maza.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, Kathleen, let me just.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make my commotion to approve the agenda staff recommends with item 5A continued to a date uncertain.
Right, John, let me, when we go forward with this, we have to give Kathleen a little bit of a lead time to get the next item up on the screen. So, but I take your motion now that none of this up there, is there a second?
I second.
Uh, let's call a roll.
I'm having a little difficulty here.
All right, so let's, I'll tell you what, let's, I'll call a roll. Mr. Wild.
Yes.
Steve Uring.
Yes.
John Maza.
Here.
Chris Marks.
Yes.
And me, yes. So it's unanimous, the the agenda is approved.
They move on? Okay. Approve the agenda now.
And Kathleen, you might want to mute your line.
It's Patricia.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
And the next item up is the report on the posting of the agenda, Kathleen, is that you?
Yes, the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 13th, 2020.
Okay, that brings us to item one, ceremonials and presentations, item 1A. Will come up in a second here. That's the update on planning commission, the planning department's operations during the COVID-19 emergency declaration. Now, who would that be, Richard?
That would be me.
That would you be you, Bonnie, okay, you're on.
Wait, do we, do we, do we vote to approve the agenda or do we just take roll call?
That was the vote, that was a, that was a.
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Motion.
Yeah, I seconded, we did vote on that chart.
And we voted on it.
Okay, so so there was a unanimous approval of the agenda, motion by Commissioner Maza, seconded by Commissioner Marks. Correct.
That's correct.
It was by, by. We we each voted.
Yes.
There's a roll call vote.
Yes. Okay, Bonnie.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for bearing with us while we work through this this new technology. And I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what the planning department has been up to since City Hall has been closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is basically what we showed you last week, but just in case anybody is new to the broadcasts this time. Planning Department and Code Enforcement Staff are working remotely. We're answering calls and emails. And our priority right now is to work on existing applications and recent mills related to those existing applications and fire rebuilds. We do have code enforcement staff in town, they are monitoring construction sites and all the normal things that they monitor. But specifically things related to the physical distancing that everybody is supposed to be following right now. Next slide. Staff hours have changed from our normal 980 schedule where staff has alternate Fridays off. So that now all staff is working Monday through Friday every week, eight to five. City Hall does remain closed at this time. Next slide. For general planning inquiries, you can continue to use the planning hotline, which is shown here on the screen. It's extension 485 at the main City Hall phone number. And we also have our our existing planning email hotline, which is mplanning@MalibuCity.org. If you have any project specific questions, you can always contact your regular case planner. Next slide. Fire rebuilds and fee waivers, the same person is our contact, our primary contact for that, that's Andrea Cruz. She's our fire rebuild contract planner and you can reach her at extension 379 or at acruz@MalibuCity.org. Next. Because we're working remotely, if if anyone needs to file an appeal of a planning commission or planning director decision or wants to, needs to file a time extension request for an application that's going to expire, this is how you do that. You can find the forms on the city website at MalibuCity.org/PlanningForms. And then you'll need to email them to Patricia Salazar, it's P.Salazar@MalibuCity.org. You can mail the fee to Patricia at the City Hall address. And if you have any issues with doing this by mail or you can't email, just contact Patricia directly. And she will coordinate an alternative method with you. Next slide. Oh, that's the end, okay, so if anybody has any questions about anything, feel free to call me directly. You can always call my extension, you can email me, or you can contact anyone on the staff or the general planning hotline. And we'll be happy to help you while we're all trying to get through this very unusual time of being all separated and working remotely. And that's.
Sorry, Commissioners, any questions for Bonnie, whose hands, any, John? I hear you, John, can you? I see.
Bonnie, I know we were, you've got a priority list on what we hear. But is there a reason why we can't hear things that we haven't heard before, like the PCH parking? The accessory dwelling units, things like that, where we've already gone through it once?
The existing dwelling units, we are working on that ordinance concurrently while we're working on all these other existing applications. Part of the issue is that we want to make sure that the public is fully able to participate. We expect to have a lot of participation in that item. The PCH parking issues will bring back as soon as we can. They're on the list of things that are, we're working on as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, yes, Chris?
Just another kind of general one. I know with with having to figure out how to get this to work and and kind of just the fact that everyone's kind of having to deal with the new normal. Our our kind of our list of projects has been relatively light. Do you kind of see a larger report coming soon where we'll have like kind of the backlog hit us? Or, you know, is that, is that still kind of working its way through?
Actually, yes, we've kept these couple of meetings a little bit on the light side to try to get our arms around the technology and make sure that, you know, we get feedback from the public on how it's going for their participation so we can address those things. But yes, the May 18th agenda will be a more substantial agenda than the the ones that we've had here recently.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, Kathleen, can we go to the next item? That's staff update on the Woolsey Fire Rebuild Process. And I guess that's Richard.
That's Richard.
Good evening, Commissioners. May I have the next slide, please? This is an update on where we are with the fire rebuild process. As you can see, we've approved a little over half the number of permits. We're past about two, we're around 230 applications that for single family homes that have been approved. And as you could see by the little pie chart at the bottom, the majority of folks are sticking with the like-for-like rebuild plus 10%. We really haven't seen much of a change there, the statistics are about the same. Next slide, please. This is to show you our progress on taking in applications. While applications have slowed down a bit, the blue line are the PBs. And on there, you can see, though, that we are still taking in applications despite not being fully staffed at City Hall. We do have members of our fire rebuild team coming into City Hall so that plans continue to get stamped. And we can keep moving applications through. So these, while the department hasn't been able to take in a lot of its normal types of projects, we still are trying to move forward with the fire related, anything emergency related. Next slide, please. To date, we've issued about $2.5 million worth of fee waivers. This is not yet, any changes in this program have not yet been heard by the city council. They will be taking it up, though, because we are receiving questions about possible extensions related to the difficulties right now, experience with folks in terms of getting, getting themselves a meeting with architects and getting work started. There is some fire rebuild construction that is still occurring in the city. And those sites are maintaining their requirements with social distancing. And we have, as Bonnie mentioned, we have our code enforcement officer in the field watching that. But the city council will be looking at this issue. So if we do receive any correspondence from folks related to concerns over the expiration date of the fee waiver program, we will pass that on to the council. Next slide, please. The numbers you see here represent what has been achieved by the building and safety department, division. They have two homes that they've completed inspections on. And we have 91 homes that are under construction and 71 applications still going through the plan check review process. And that is, once again, just like planning, fire rebuilds, when it comes to building safety are still being processed. There are plan checkers working on those applications and communications going back and forth with applicants. So that process too is moving along. Next slide, please. And once again, just a reminder, we've been mentioning this at the last few meetings, is that if folks are having a hard time receiving our public notices because they're not at their property or they're at temporary addresses, you can use utilize the email address that you see here on the screen to send an email to our planning commission secretary Kathleen Stecco. And what Kathleen will do is put your electronic contact information in our database so that any notices will be sent by via my email rather than emailing. I'm available for any questions if there are any, thank you.
Commissioners, questions for Richard? Yes, Steve.
One quick one, Richard, you know, we talked about this before, about our ability to contact.
Just to make sure that they're kind of the context right.
I believe, if I understand you correctly, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Richard? All right, Kathleen, that brings us to item two, 2A, written in communications from the public. Communication to the public concerning matters not on the agenda. We had one that you told me about, Kathleen, that was Marnie Cammons, is there, we have the ability to reach her?
The following persons have requested to speak and will be called upon to speak in the following order. Marnie Cammons and Craig Hill. Marnie Cammons, you may begin.
I don't see an image for her.
I don't see her in the list either.
Well, let's go to Craig and then if if we can make contact with Marnie, we'll come back to her. Craig, you want to, Kathleen, can you?
Yeah, do you hear me here?
Now we can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, great, hi Jeff, yeah, I've got my bunny ears on. John, that's not an hors d'oeuvre plate, it's a Navajo basket and Richard, nice beard. A number of people, including me, found absurd and disturbing a discussion at the last meeting in evaluating neighborhood character. The idea that a house built in the 1950s would be considered irrelevant. All the houses are part of the existing neighborhood, no less so because of their size or their age. And for example, if you think of the Victorian houses in San Francisco, really nice, 150 years old versus the stucco condominium across the street, which contributes more to the character of that neighborhood. So you could actually make the opposite argument that the longer a house has been there, the longer, the deeper the role it has played in establishing the character. So stepping back, this underscores the need to address neighborhood character in a more effective way. We know that. We use the size of the house now as a proxy for other indices of character. Some of the underlying ideas are that we don't want the neighborhood to change too fast, that we want to ensure environmental protection, and some more ephemeral notions like we like living among people who aren't too terribly different from us. So for instance, a retired couple might prefer not to live next door to an Airbnb party house or. Anyway, I don't disagree with the decision reached in that specific case for reasons that don't now matter. But I just hope the commission and the council will continue to do more thinking on what neighborhood character means and how to preserve it. As it's really at the heart of the whole point of having planning commission in the first place. I mean, to say that an older house would be irrelevant is not too far away from saying that we don't need to be planning at all. And I'll just leave off with a quick bit of news from today about the SARS-CoV-2. Two new separate studies from Harvard say that in order to be opening the economy, the US needs to be testing 20 to 30 million people per day for antibodies. So far, we only have experimental antibody tests and the US has tested only 4 million for active disease in the several months we've been testing. So it's going to be a long summer and fall. I hope the city is already planning for Santa Ana season in terms of the fire response in the in the context of what may be by then a severely debilitated county infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And we made contact with Marnie.
Hey, one question on that, I just want to check with the admins, would she be able to get a message to you guys if she's trying to communicate? Because then all the machines are named after people's names.
My understanding is that she's listed as iPad and I think we're working on trying to get her able to speak.
I can see the little.
She needs to enable her computer audio or iPad audio.
Could she alternatively dial in?
Yes.
Are those?
But it would be easier if she just enabled the audio on there.
Okay. Are the instructions to dial in also included in the instruction to the public?
Yes, they should be.
So she can hear, she could follow those instructions to just punch a number in on her phone?
You know, one of the problems with the Zoom format is it's not immediately obvious when you bring the program up that your need to turn on your video, that you need to turn on your audio. As we're seeing. I'll tell you what, let's.
We can, we can move on and if she's be able to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just sort of put a point on this and and come back to it if if we can make contact with her. Let's move on to item 2B, which is planning commission and staff comments and inquiries, Commissioners. Oh, come on, John, I mean, Steve, sorry. Now I can't hear you at all, Steve.
Unmute yourself.
Steve's unmute.
I'm muted, and now, hear me now?
Hear you now.
Okay, sorry, yeah. This goes back to the comment John made, I got some calls this week, short-term rentals are coming back to Malibu. And apparently the this information I was given is is because, you know, Malibu has got such a low instances of this cope, this virus, the people are getting out of the city where there's a lot of it and trying to come out here and enjoying themselves. And they expect that's going to increase as we go into the summer. So, you know, the city council basically said, come back with the a ordinance that mirrors what Santa Monica had. And I'm just wondering if there's any chance we could get that in front of us, because that seems to be a fairly straightforward process. Get that done and then you can go to the city council where they can debate it whatever they want. So something to think about, because if the short-term metals pop up again this summer, it's going to be miserable for a lot of people. And then the second item was, and I don't know if anybody saw this, that the farmer's market this Sunday, this Sunday got noticed a couple of places, TMZ, and I saw it on Facebook someplace else, about their ability to do social distancing. And they were sort of complimented for the fact that, you know, they were one of the big farmers markets, they were doing it correctly. So I just think that's interesting, if people are trying to get out on a Sunday and want to go out and buy some vegetables, that seems to be a place where they can go. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. John?
On that same matter, I had two residents from East Malibu on the highway call me to complain about a party house that apparently has party every single night and they have 30 to 40 people. And so I told them to, you know, call compliance, but I would assume, and may you correct me if I'm wrong, that the city has some ability to stop things like that for social distancing. Apparently the sheriffs don't care. But apparently this is, these are big parties, not little parties.
They, the, anybody that observes an instance like that needs to contact the sheriff and they can also follow up and at the same time, contact city code enforcement so that we can follow up.
Yeah, the sheriff, the sheriff has jurisdiction to to enforce the county health order. So they would be the proper people to contact and they should be enforcing that.
Apparently the city should repeat that to them because they come out and just leave and they don't write incident reports.
I had, I had somebody complain to me and I suggested they contact County Public Health. Was that, do they have any enforcement power? I would assume that would be the enforcement agency.
The sheriffs, any, any peace officer has ability to enforce that order in the county. If you contact the county health, they can probably refer to either the sheriffs or their enforcement division. But I don't think they're usually set up to deal with that type of enforcement. It's usually more technical what they would be involved in.
Okay, Jeff. Steve.
Just as as a suggestion, you know, if this thing is going to increase during the summer and we don't have an ordinance in place to try and prevent it, I'll provide a real clear message to all the residents of what they should do, who they should get a hold of, what they should expect that response to be. So if this thing does get cranked up, at least they'll have some, some place to go to try and get some relief from from these large party houses.
Okay, other comments? Staff? Bonnie?
Um, I don't really have much to add other than to follow up what I already mentioned earlier about the staff activities during this pandemic. But with respect to short-term rentals, I'm sure everybody will recall that we had an ordinance before the council that would have put in place some temporary measures. And now we're kind of, that got deferred to work on this other thing to model after the Santa Monica ordinance. So we're, we're kind of stuck in this position right now. So our, our remedies are code enforcement and the sheriff's department in the, for the time being. So we'll bring back short-term rentals as soon as we can do that. And that's all I can tell you right now.
What, what do you think is holding up short-term rentals?
Public participation is a big concern and this meeting format, until we get to a point where it's very easy for the full public to participate, that's part of the concern.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? All right, oh, Chris?
Yeah, just, just the general comments, I did want to just call, call attention what Craig called out, I hadn't really thought of that. But if, if there is a real problem with funding come fire season, might we have trouble even getting, you know, resources out here? That, that's something which did sound, you know, did get my attention. I did want to call out based on something I heard on KBU, thanks Hans for this. It does look like there are ways the fire departments are looking to kind of work in more discreet groups so they don't have kind of cross contamination, also with more focus on local resources, if I'm remembering correctly. Hopefully that'll help our ability to fight in that case if the funding is there. Also, did want to just kind of give a little more thought on that STR discussion. I think we just kind of Steve's and John's points, we just got to give very clear guidance on what someone can do, who they can turn to and make sure that that entity be at the sheriff or whoever is aware of and ready for that to respond correctly. Especially if it's over 10, I think there's current, you know, the current safer at home requires no groups larger than 10, I believe. So anyway, just, just so we know how that can be, you know, dealt with if that's a problem. And then on the neighborhood character discussion, some of the Craig brought up. I know that there, the part of our discussion focused on homes built since 1990. It did seem kind of arbitrary to me at the time to kind of pick a, you know, date in there. But, you know, I kind of get the concept. What I did want to check, Trevor stepped away, shoot, I had a question for him. But it did seem like if we did put, Trevor, can you hear me still? Okay, it did sound like if we put some date that we would consider homes from a date forward that seemed to go against policy 15 because that wouldn't necessarily reflect the majority of the of the city. So we'd be effectively making a decision based on a minority for how to rule on given, any given property. Could that be something that could be of concern to you at all, Trevor? If we, if we did have some kind of date for which we looked at homes built from a certain date forward? You know, if we're going to get into the details about neighborhood character, you know, we should agendize that and get into it again. I don't want to speculate on hypothetically how it would be considered in a particular situation. If we have a situation where this comes up, we can talk about it more in depth. But this is a, you know, neighborhood character is a, is a term that's been long used in the city and has a number of practices that are involved in it. And it's, it's, it's something that we're going to deal with, you know, on a case by case basis until there's, you know, further guidance, it seems like. Okay, I just wanted to get that out there in case we had any risks from, from kind of focusing on a narrower segment of the community. So that's it for now, thank you.
Bonnie?
Chair Jennings, I just want to add, we do have a short-term rental hotline that's established that goes directly to city code enforcement officer. The, there's an email address that is str@MalibuCity.org. And there is a, the telephone hotline where complaints will go directly to code enforcement. And that is the city's number 310-456-2489 and it's extension 308. That's all.
I want to get that up on the website.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, so that concludes item 2A, we're not making any contact with Marnie, I take it. I can still see the little dial on her iPad thing there. So let's go on with the consent calendar. We've got four items on the consent calendar, 3B, 1 through 4. Is there anybody who wants to pull any of these items on the commission? Okay, Kathleen, John?
I want to pull 3B1, 3B2, 3B3. And I don't know if there's a 3B4, is there?
Yeah, there is, you want to pull it?
No.
Okay, but I'm looking for a motion to, that's a de minimis waiver, so it's really a receive and file. So let's, we'll. I'm sorry.
Then you can receive and file 3B4.
Three, yes, 3B4. Is, are Kathleen, are there any people in the public who have asked to pull? Well, the only one that would be asking would about would be 3B4, I take it there's nobody who's asking to pull 3B4.
No, there is not.
Okay, so let's go back and we'll start with 3B1. 3B1 is the coastal development permit. I got the wrong one here, hold on.
So 3B4 is accepted without objection?
It's, yeah, receive and file. 3B1 is the extension of coastal development permit number 13-047 and CDP amendment 13, 15-007. This is for the property of 24840 Pacific Coast Highway. And staff report, please.
I just believe Rudolph, would you like a full staff report or any responses to?
I think it abbreviated a staff report, it's probably okay. John, do you have any particular item that you want to address or?
I just want to address the whether or not this meets the qualifications for an extension in that it doesn't, the letter, the letter that was sent last year is virtually the same as the letter that was. The letter that was sent last year is virtually the same as the letter that was sent this year. With the exception of one or two sentences, it's almost a Xerox of it and it doesn't appear anything's been done.
Or do you need a staff report, John, or should we just?
No, I just needed answer of what, uh, I talked to Richard today. He was going to check in to see if permits have been pulled.
I accidentally hit the link.
Getting a little some cross talk here. And that was, I think I was hearing, uh, Kathleen. Uh, Richard, John asked a question. Did you get it?
Yes, I spoke to the building and safety department this afternoon. Um, there are, there, uh, looked like permits were obtained, but no work has taken place. Uh, then no inspections on the back of those.
So last question on that, that the, the staff report indicated that, that there were some earlier. Building permits that were, that were obtained, but they were allowed to lapse. And, uh, when you say that there were permits obtained, are you talking about new permits or are you talking about the ones that were previously allowed to lapse?
The previously one, the, the ones allowed to previously lapse.
Okay, okay. Steve?
I'll make a motion to deny this perm, deny the extension.
Uh, we, uh.
Excuse me, we do have a public speaker.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, the applicant.
Yeah, and I would like to hear Lily's report if we could, just, just so we can get the full background.
Okay, Lily, let's, uh, let's have a report on it.
Next slide, please. The project involves the demolition of an existing residence and construction of. A new residence with accessory structures, including a subterranean garage, a cabana, a gym. And a guard station. Next slide, please. On August third, twenty fifteen, the original CDP was approved. With an expiration date of August third, twenty eighteen. Building permits were issued in April of twenty seventeen. Uh, and an excavation permit was issued on, in twenty eighteen. Next slide. The first time extension was submitted on July twenty seventh, twenty eighteen. This was prior to the expiration date. And that, uh, extra, extension was granted on October seventeen, twenty eighteen. With a new expiration date of August second, twenty nineteen. Next slide. On July twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, a second time extension was submitted. The applicant states that the reason for the extension request is continuation of a personal family matter. That was preventing the applicant from moving forward with the project. Uh, so they were dealing with, with the issue. Um, prior to that, the applicant states that they invested time and money for the plans and studies over the past five years. Next slide. The applicant requested a one year time extension, but staff is recommending a one and a half year extension. Because the applicant would be required to update all their plans to comply with the new building code. And this would allow them the opportunity to, to do that. Next slide. The LCP does allow the planning commission to grant a reasonable extension of time for due cause. Um, it does not define due cause and doesn't specify what a reasonable extension of time is. Next slide. And so LCP policy five was, um, drafted to establish guidance on. Um, when CDPs may be extended, given that the aggregate life of the CDP does not exceed five years. Next slide. Subsequent to the approval of the project, there have been no significant changes to the project conditions. Or the zoning ordinance under which the project was approved. Next slide. So approval of the second time extension would, uh, grant a one point five year term. And the new expiration date would be February third, twenty twenty one. All original conditions of approval, approval would remain in effect. Excellent. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff does recommend approval and, um, I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Lily. Ex parte communications, uh, Chris?
None.
And John?
None.
Steve?
None.
David?
None.
Steve's dog. Um, okay.
Question?
Chair Jennings, do you have any disclosures?
Uh, no, no, I'm sorry. Uh, John?
I just want to point out, the reason I, I looked at this was we had two complaint letters from neighbors. And when I looked at it, um, there is no reason given for the, for the, uh, extension. Other than they don't want to tell us why.
Don't we need to have the public comment first, Trevor?
Uh, we will, we will, uh, allow the public to speak, yeah. We, we're not, we haven't closed the public room. We haven't opened it. So Kathleen, have we got a public speaker?
Yes, we have, uh, Craig Knickerbocker, the applicant.
Mr. Knickerbocker, would you like to speak?
Yes, uh, you guys. You guys have me?
Uh, hear your voice, yeah.
Um, it's, I'm pushing video and it says the, you won't let me get the video through. My host won't let me put video through, but if you're, my voice is good enough, that works.
Yes, it's audio only.
Okay, um, well, I am the owner's representative, business manager for the applicant Johnsons. And, uh, I can understand, uh, some of the confusion here. They, um, they got their permits in April of seventeen and we were bidding it all out. And they spent two million dollars in about four or five years. We were trying to get the permits and get all through it. We were bidding it all out, about ready to go. And then a, a, a kind of messy divorce, uh, started. And, uh, that's, that was the, the personal nature and a property dispute. And I, I won't bring into all the, the ugly details, but that went on. Um, and paperwork would show this if anybody wants to see it. But anyway, this, the formal separation was on ten seventeen, just about four or five months after we had got our permits. And the divorce finalized on twelve nineteen of, uh, in, uh, this last December of nineteen. So it was about a two year, two year ordeal, trying to figure out who was going to own this property. So, um, I'm representing Mrs. Johnson, who now has full control of the property. And then we began to bid it out again and we started in January, February, and then the virus hit and the meeting and the social distancing hit. And so since kind of February, um, we, uh. We've just been kind of sitting here and talking about it a little bit and asking if we could get one more. Just ask your mercy, your grace and your compassion on us because of what she's gone through. And, and just get one more extension here. And if we don't do it there, we can publicly tell you, then you cancel us after this. So I would just, um, kind of, I guess we, on behalf of Mrs. Johnson, just, uh, respectfully ask you to give us a little bit of compassion. One more time here and, and then take it away after that if we don't get this house going. And I think that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, please fire away.
John?
Uh, do you have your final permits? I mean, you're going out to bid, uh, do you have the final permits from the permit department to build?
Um, we, we have, um, I believe we have to go back through the building department to update some of. The code changes is what I, my basic understanding is. So if we get the extension, then we'll have to run through a few months of that. And, um, and then we got to update a few bids, which is a little tough to do. Cause it's hard to have meetings with contractors and all those kinds of situations. Um, but, uh, if we get this extension, then we'll try and move ahead quickly and do, do that, make it happen, whether it be a via Zoom or whatever. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, um, if there are no other questions, I'd like to ask Lily one.
I'm sorry, John, I didn't understand you.
If there are no other questions of Craig, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Lily, Lily a question.
Any other questions of Craig Knickerbocker forward, losing possible? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, so Craig, um, thanks for, uh, the kind of additional explanation. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm following correctly what you're, what you're saying. John pointed out that the letters are very similar. It's because it was the same situation. It was being dealt with in the first extension and the second. That's why everything kind of looked boilerplate to us because hey, nothing's really changed. I'm still going through this personal situation, correct?
That's absolutely correct, except what changed is this last December, they finalized. Um, who owned the property and we, we were free to move forward and we started to in January. And then when the virus hit, it was kind of hard to get with contractors and then we knew the expiration was coming up. We, I think we were even on the February docket to come before you, or maybe it was the March one and it got extended off till today. So we, we were trying to get extended a few months ago. Maybe Lily could give you the exact date. So.
That's okay. I, I, I just want to make sure that was exactly what's happening. And then, um, I know you had initially asked her, the applicant and asked you as the applicant had asked for the one year extension, we're advised for the year and a half. Um, I mean, Lily, there might be another question in here for you later, but to, from your perspective, Craig. Do you feel you could get to the point you need to get to satisfy these requirements within that one year extension? Or do you agree you need the year and a half?
I, I kind of was taking the, the, the city staff's advice and, and especially with the virus and the fire. Um, I don't real, really know how quickly the city can process some of these code upgrades and, and get us back going. I know we paid all our fees and things like that long ago.
Um, at this point, it would be up to, um, the applicant, the applicant, uh, team to update plans. And, um, through building plan check again. And because the, um, original project approval was in September, we would just wanted to make sure that you had. Adequate time and, uh, September is, it's a little frightening to say, but not that far from today. So if, if you only were granted a one year extension today, that would just go through September. So we were recommending eighteen months so that it would put you at, um, February. Twenty one. Lily, is that correct?
Uh, Lily's on mute.
Sorry about that. Yes, that's February twenty twenty one.
John, you have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, John, you had a question for Lily?
Yes, Lily, if no code changes had changed, which was this last January. These are building codes adopted by the city, I mean, by, from the state building codes. We haven't changed the LIP or the LUP. Would, could, without these changes, could they start tomorrow building? Have they been issued the final building permits? Not irrelevant on plumbing code and things like that. Do they have a grading permit? Do they have a building permit? Do they have a, you know, all those permits?
They, they were issued those permits, but they have subsequently expired. So they would need to reapply for those.
So those expired because it was done a couple of years ago, right?
Right.
So nothing has been done in the last year.
That's correct.
Okay, that's my problem here is we got a letter last year saying we had a personal problem. But now it's solved and we're ready to go ahead and zip has been done.
I mean, before we get into the discussion, let me see if there's anybody else who wishes to speak on the item. Is there anybody in? In the ether that wants to weigh in on this item?
I don't see anybody listed, no.
Okay, fine. So I think we'll close the public hearing at this point. We're back at the commission table now. John, you go back.
The reason I'm, I'm going to make a motion to deny is that. In fact, nothing has been done, well, well over a year. And the year, the letter we got last year said, we're ready to roll. Now, to use the excuse that the plumbing code may have changed, something like that is pretty weak, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, no changes in the LIP, no changes in, in the process. Uh, no effort has been made to pull final permits. In fact, uh, uh, they allowed the permits they had to expire.
All right, John, that's your motion?
My motion is to deny.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
All right, David, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, perhaps I didn't understand what was stated, but I thought that.
Excuse me, we're having some technical difficulties in getting the, um, vote, uh, to appear.
Getting, uh, well, we're not there yet, but okay, we're, we're still talking. Can you hear me, Kathleen?
Go ahead, David.
I, I, I thought the speaker indicated that there was a divorce concerning who had ownership of the property. And the right to proceed to develop it that didn't get finalized until the end of last year. Did I misunderstand that? Because if that's the case, doesn't that explain your issue, John?
Well, it would if they hadn't sent it a letter saying everything had been resolved and they were ready to work last year. And they wanted an extension to work on it. And you can, you can get permits while you're in a divorce. Whoever, whoever, uh, ends up with the house still needs permits. In the meantime, they let them lapse. So our, what we're allowed to do is give an, an extension if people are diligent on trying to meet. The permit process and, and, uh, that is limited to five years. This is, takes it over five years and they were not diligent.
I, uh, uh, again, I, I don't think you can proceed with getting permits if there are two different people who are claiming ownership of the property. And not agreeing, which I'm reading between the lines on what kind of development should go forward. Uh, until they have the ownership issue of the property worked out. But I, I agree with you. I mean, the letter should have been more specific, I guess.
Um, yeah, I, I've kind of, um, sort of along the same lines. It didn't seem to me like the, the letter just sort of saying, well, really don't want to get into it is really not sufficient to provide. Um, I, I'm pretty liberal in, in allowing extensions, but that seemed to be, to be kind of pushing it. However, uh, I've listened to Mr. Knickerbocker, if, if what he says is true, that in fact, there was a divorce going on. And neither party would surrender, uh, uh, ownership of the property to the other until, until just this recent time. Uh, that, that, I think that does change the circumstances. And, uh, so I, I'm, I'm looking more sympathetically at it as a result of that.
And isn't it still within the five year period, given even the year and a half extension that staff had recommended or not?
That makes it five and a half years. And I'm willing to amend, amend to approve with a one year extension. But I think that's even pushing it.
Well, the problem, John, with a one year extension is Bonnie pointed out is that, that, that only takes them to September and the chances of them being able to. Get anything done within that time period are probably not too good.
Yeah, but we're supposed to follow the policy that the city council adopted. And we aren't if we do that. And we aren't actually, in my opinion, doing it if we give any extension.
Steve?
I, I just, I just want to remind people, I sat through this racist meeting that was conducted by Bonnie and one of her staff people. Where they were the ones that came back and requested that it's, as opposed to giving these ongoing extensions. That we get a little tighter unless there's significant reasons for doing that. Because what's going to happen is exactly, you know, people come back, they want to change the stuff. So we're going all back to, you know, the whole process all over again, as opposed to saying, look, you're going to build it, go out and build it, get it done. So I'm, I'm going back to, but the, the planning staff's request to say, don't keep giving these extensions.
From the staff's perspective, um, the policy does allow for consideration of extraordinary circumstances. Such as health conditions or divorce. Um, I, our recommendation is an eighteen month extension because of the divorce. We didn't have all the details of that until now, but now that we know that, um, confirms what our recommendation was. And at this point, I don't, from a staff standpoint, since nothing has changed with the codes and everything. It is a more practical solution from my perspective to grant the extension and let them proceed with what they've, um, invested. All this time and energy into, um, even though they've had a pause while this divorce was being finalized.
John?
Well, I, I think the pause happened a long time before the divorce. Uh, no work has been done on this for years. And now I come in from an investment advisor point, you don't just stop a project when you have Mr. Knickerbocker to run it. You preserve your assets during a divorce. They apparently did not want to preserve their assets. But I know divorces can be contentious. I just think that you don't give an what we're allowed to do is do one year extensions up to five years if they have a reason. Well, I don't think it's a valid reason, but I'm willing to accept if Steve will go along with it, a one year extension to keep within the five year boundary. That's dependent on what Steve says and, you know, I'll take comments from Chris.
Yeah, so so I'm just I'm just trying to read, you know, exactly what this part of the code says. And to Bonnie's point, the last line of, you know, policy five is that absent extraordinary circumstances, the aggregate life shall not exceed five years. So I mean, that that does give us in my book, a little bit of wiggle room if we agree this is extraordinary. I think what what's troubling is that obviously people don't want to be talking about their personal lives on a forum like this. So, you know, they try to give the least they can. I can respect that. And now that I have the understanding what's really been going on, John, I hear what you're saying. They should both be trying to preserve kind of joint assets. But, you know, there are times where just, you know, things fall apart. So this this seems to fit right in the sweet spot of what's written up here. You know, if there are extreme economic conditions or, you know, divorce, et cetera. I mean, I I see this as a case where I think, in my opinion, they should be given some leniency because they, you know, they're being upfront with what's been going on as far as we know. And they've they've hit a hit a problem. I I'm on the fence if it would be a year or a year and a half to Commissioner to Chair Jennings' point. Zero percent chance of a denial is is worse than giving them a shot for, you know, through the end of a year. The extraordinary circumstances could give us to five and a half. I'm more leaning towards giving them that the full five years. And that would be, you know, the the extent, but I'm not comfortable with just saying no, because they have shared with us, you know, the the extraordinary circumstances they've been dealing with.
All right, so we have a motion, John. I'm sorry, Trevor, let me get Trevor in here.
Sure, I I just want to point one thing out. If you're if you're looking at the one versus one and a half years going over the five year cap, I think what staff is saying is that that because of COVID nineteen, there's problems with it might be in terms of staff processing it within the five year period. So that would be the justification for the one and a half versus one. I think that that was, you know, given an extension that they can't actually meet might not be a good idea.
What is the motion that's pending?
The motion is to deny, but John is is saying that he might be willing to consider changing. Now, I just let me throw in my two cents, which is that policy statements are policy statements, they're not law. The law is good cause and that's up to, in the eye of every beholder, without regard to what the city council said, without regard to what staff says the policy is. John Mazza.
I know COVID, but we're they are talking about or telling us that they're they need to make changes due to the building code. And nothing's going to slow that down. I mean, a pipe is a pipe and a wire is a wire and you follow the building code and the permit department stamps your plans.
I think the problem.
Not huge changes. And it happens every single approval we gave before January first has to do that. Every single one. And it's a very standard thing. So I'd like to amend my motion to approve a one year extension. If I can get Steve to second it.
That that would be to withdraw your motion and to create a new motion to to approve the resolution, but with a one year extension?
Correct, with the acquiescence of the second.
But I think the I think Steve has to agree to you withdrawal of your motion, but if he does that, then you can make your new motion.
I would agree to that with Jeff, I would agree with withdrawal, and I'll second Johnson's motion.
Okay. Well, all right, so as a further discussion of the of the of this motion. All right, Kathleen. Yes, David.
If staff is telling us that in their best judgment, it's unlikely to happen during this extension that we're giving them, I I think we're we're cutting off our nose despite our face here. If if we've decided that their justification is legitimate, I think it does not make sense to make it for less than the year and a half that we're being recommended to do.
That's where.
Chris has got his hand up.
Yeah, Trevor kind of spoke on Bonnie's behalf. Bonnie, can you clarify, do you feel that this you need that extra six months for, you know, for Malibu staff to manage this or or something else because of COVID?
It would be helpful from a staff standpoint. I think another consideration is how much or whether the applicant's team is affected by the social distancing rules and things that are in place right now also. But my recommendation so that we don't have to hold an additional public hearing in September about this is grant eighteen months.
So your concern is more about this applicant team's ability to kind of get the required input to bring to staff? And you're just kind of baking that into the equation?
It's a combination. I mean, the the pandemic is affecting how everybody works that I'm just taking that into consideration.
Okay.
Are you talking about permit staff or planning staff?
Both.
Why do we need planning staff if he's claiming that this is purely permit codes?
Because typically before a permit is issued, it runs through planning staff one last time to make sure that there was nothing in the building code or the the plan updates that affects anything related to the planning commission's decision.
Okay, so let's let's try to move it along. John, do you want to do you want to pursue the motion? To a vote, we can call it for a vote now.
Okay.
All right, so Kathleen, can you call the role, please? Can you hear me, Kathleen? Oh, there we go.
My apologies. Yes. So could you please repeat who made the motion?
John is the made the motion and Steve Euring is the seconder.
Okay. Vice Chair Mazza?
I'm sorry, Kathleen, let me stop you for just a second. I got.
I just got parliamentary question for you, Mr. Chairman. If if I would like to to have a a vote also on an eighteen month extension versus a one year extension, what is the best way to put that forward?
Well, there's two ways you can do it. One way is to simply vote against the motion as it's coming down. And if you're three votes, if there are three people who agree with you, then the the motion will fail. Then a new motion can be made. The second way to do it is to offer an amendment to the motion. So, you know, the the John's motion is to deny it. Your motion is to you move to amend his motion to grant it and to grant a one point five or a one and a half year extension. If you get a second for that, then we vote on that. And that basically changes the motion. My own preference would be that that we simply, you know, if you don't like the motion, which is the motion to deny, then you vote it down and 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 a new motion will be will follow. And Chris, yes.
Sorry, and and just to role play a scenario, if we allow a year, this applicant still could try to extend one more time. And I mean, then we're burning hours of both planning staff and our time. But that is still going to be their right as they're coming towards that end, trying to argue extraordinary circumstances. If, say, COVID hit really hard, what have you.
Well, that's the problem, because it it crossed my mind to say, well, like Mr. Knickerbocker was saying, you know, we're promised, you know, swear to God, swear to God, this is the last time we're going to come to you. But that's not the law. The law, you know, there really isn't, it isn't possible for us to say no further extensions because good cause is good cause. And so, yeah, I think that that's kind of self defeating. Does that answer your question, David?
It does, but I think the quickest way, interested in quick here, to get this point across is for me to now formally move, if I don't get a second or whatever, I move to amend John's proposal to eighteen months rather than one year.
I'm sorry, I may be mistaken. John, was your motion for a for a year?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that you have moved to amend John's motion to a year and a half. Is there a second to to your motion? I'll second it. We have moved to second and we've had a lot of discussion about this. Kathleen, can you call the role on this is this is a vote on the on David's amendment, which is to to grant a one and a half year extension?
This is to amend the motion.
It's to amend John's motion. Yes, it is.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes three to two. Do we need a motion? Do we need a vote on the main motion now?
Yeah, so now the motion is is to adopt the proposed staff recommendation resolution, but as is with a one and a half year extension granted.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to amend that? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend it to one year.
Well, now we're just going to go around in circles because.
We'll vote on it if it passes, we'll see.
Fine, okay, is there is there a second to your amendment?
I thought we'd already voted our motion with a second.
No, we just voted to change the amount of the motion.
John has offered an amendment, back to where he was. Are you is there is there a second for that for John's motion to amend?
Well, based upon the last vote, he's going to get the year and a half, so why don't we just get there?
We can count to three, two. Oh, good. All right, so let's let's take the vote on the main motion that the the motion to amend fails for lack of a second. We have a vote on the main motion, please, Kathleen.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Just to clarify, this is to approve staff's recommendation of eighteen month extension.
That's correct.
No.
Commissioner Euring?
No.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion Harrys.
All right, all right, that concludes item three A, three B one. We're now at three B two. Three B two is an administrative coastal development permit. Nineteen dash oh seventy two, this is a follow up application for a new wastewater treatment system to replace the existing system for an existing multifamily structure at twenty eight seven twenty eight seven eleven Pacific Coast Highway. And John, you pull this one.
Yeah, I just want I talked to Richard about this one. We got a complaint letter that the system didn't work. The light was flashing all the time and admitted horrible smells from somebody. And so I just wanted to know what staff comment is on that. Because I don't want to prove it if it doesn't work.
Okay, let me. I I was confused about that because to tell you the truth, John, I read the complaint letter and I thought it was about the Paradise Cove project across the street that's still coming up before us, but.
No, it's it's the chicken coops across from the fire station.
Okay. So who who on staff can give us some some help on that?
Tyler. Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission, Tyler Eaton, assistant planner. So, yeah, we did receive a complaint about the smell. Basically, what I did is I talked to our environmental sustainability department, ESD for short. Inspections were conducted on the OWTS when it was installed under the emergency permit. And it passed all inspections and it was installed correctly. To their knowledge, it should not smell if it was installed correctly. And it did again, a pass pass all inspection, so it was to their eyes installed correctly. So what happens right now is that there's a compliance agreement with the city. Basically, it's a multifamily parcel, there's twenty units up top and there's ten units below. This application only serves, this application's OWTS only serves the ten units below. And as part of the compliance agreement, they have to still come in to upgrade the septic system for the upper twenty units. And to their knowledge, that upper system still gets pumped because it's an older system and it gets pumped quite frequently. And sometimes when it gets pumped, the effluent comes to the surface and that could create the smell that's that she was complaining about. Just to further the point, there are future inspections that need to be made. If it if approved, planning, the planning department, myself will go out there and inspect and I will certainly look for that. And the building inspectors also will inspect to make sure everything crosses on their end. I'm open for any questions.
John.
If we have a policy that if you get pumped twice in six months, you get, you have to fix it. Why did we? Why was one fixed and not the other? And are we going to get that fixed before we approve it? Or are you going to come to us for approval?
Yeah, it's going to have to come back out under a separate application for approval. There's been problems to our knowledge with the applicant, with the homeowners association and and the funding for it. And so, you know, just to get this one in the door was in our eyes a success. The emergency permit was issued in two thousand twelve. There was a follow up CDP in two thousand thirteen that was that expired basically. So basically, they tried to do this before with their follow up to the emergency. It expired because of funding, they couldn't pull the all the permits necessary. And now they're coming in to fulfill their obligation to the emergency and get this one squared away. There the other upper units that still require an upgrade, that's still under the compliance agreement and it's with our code enforcement department. So we're actively pursuing to make sure that they get that application in the door.
So you're going to come to us and have that approved?
Myself or someone from the planning department will again, it'll probably be an ACDP just like this one. That one did not fail, so there's no ECDP required, but they do need to upgrade as part of the compliance agreement.
So we want eight years of a bad septic system?
Yeah, like I said, there was funding problems that were mentioned. And so we were just trying to do the best we can to help the applicant process this and come up to code.
Are funding requirements a way out of a code violation on on septic, Bonnie?
No, there the the applicants, well, code enforcement has been working for many years with the applicants and we've we've brought this this far, so we'd like to get this application over the finish line and we'll continue to work with them to get the other system upgraded as well.
Okay, I'll 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 unpull the.
Well, it's a it's a receive and file, so if there's objection, that matter will just be received and filed.
I did have one quick question, if I may.
Chris?
Yeah, just in terms of the rights of any neighbor having an issue like this, what what are their rights, Tyler and or Don Bonnie? In terms of what they can do or what can be done, you know, not only the neighbor who wrote the letter, but maybe anyone else who has similar concerns?
Well, if someone's experiencing foul odors and things, they should definitely contact code enforcement and code enforcement will pursue that. So that's that's what any property owner should do or neighbor that's living next to somebody with a failing system.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, can we check if there are disclosures and if there's any public comment?
All right, are there any disclosures from anyone on on this item?
No.
No.
None. All right, is there any public member of the public who wishes to address the commission on the item?
I'm not showing anybody.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. All right, matters received and filed.
Thank you.
It takes us to item three B three, which is the administrative coastal development permit Woolsey Fire nineteen dash oh oh five is an application for a new single family residence at twenty nine six twenty three Cuthbert Road. John?
Well, my concern on this, and I'm going to ask it to be continued for a full hearing, is that the staff report is deficient in that it states that there are no trails, public trails. There's a trail on the total on the inland border of the property directly on the property line. And it's posted with a eight by eight foot sign and a gate. It's used a lot. When I went up there to inspect it, three city, I mean, state of California trucks came up there. It also is adjoining a park, state park. And it never mentions this in the staff report. And it asks for a variance and variances are not allowed from parkland more than a less than a hundred feet, and this is less over less than a hundred feet. There's no variance allowed in the LIP, that section. Oh, I don't know, three, three point two. So and then mostly there is absolutely no data in the staff report on neighborhood character. There's other problems with the property with the staff report, but you cannot, some of the items asked to be accepted in this administrative permit are not allowed under the LCP.
Okay, well, I see two site plan reviews and a minor mod, I don't see a variance, but.
The variance is for setback.
Okay, so the issue here, there's only one issue, and that's whether there are three votes to bring this matter, this item back for a full CDP. It's an administrative CDP now. And the issue is whether to bring it back for a full. It's an administrative C D P now, uh, and, uh, the issue is whether to bring it back for a full, uh, full hearing. So, uh, do we need a staff report on, on that, Trevor?
I apologize, uh, we don't need a staff report, we can do, uh, but we need disclosures and to see if there are any public, uh, speakers on this one.
Right, and so let's go through the disclosures, uh, David, any, any expedite communications on this one?
Uh, yes, the, uh, applicant called me today to discuss. Basically, things that are already in the staff report and prior to that, I had gone out to the site as well and walked it to see what it looked like.
Chris, Steve?
None.
Uh, John?
Yes, Chris and I visited the property, I'm guessing Saturday. And that's when we saw the, uh, the sign for the state park and the. And then we walked the trail along the, I guess would be north, uh, boundary of the property.
Violation of the law, huh? Uh, Chris?
I don't know which.
Trail, by the way, it's public trail, so it wasn't a violation.
Um, yeah, so go ahead, go ahead, Chair Jennings, anything?
No, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, yeah, as, as discussed by Commissioner Mazza, we did, um, walk along that trail above, kind of above the property there. Um, and, uh, other than that, no, there, no additional disclosures.
Okay, um, well, I've walked that trail for years, uh, on almost daily basis and, uh, watched the house that was there before. Uh, watched it when it was, uh, modified and there was additions made to it and, and you, you basically kind of looked down into the backyard there. Um, I, I, the, the, the staff report does mention a trail. Uh, it, it says that it hasn't been improved, well, it's a fire road, so, um, those are my disclosures. Are the members of the public who wish to address the commission on this item?
Yes, Chair, we have the applicant Daniella Vichstaff and, um, a member of the public Dana Growich.
Okay, um. Daniella, why don't we try her first? Yes, I can't get the last name, I'm not even going to try. Daniella.
Hi, uh, I'm Daniella Rix, I'm the architect for the project, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, regarding, uh, your questions, um, my understanding from my research is that the project is not part of an E S H A. And, uh, when we, uh, looked into the trail and everything, um, measuring and all that. Um, the distance, the closest distance to the, um, new project will be farther than the previous project. Uh, which is, um, around like eighty-seven feet measuring from the L A County, uh, G I S and net. So that's why we didn't think, uh, it would be a problem. Also, we, uh, are considering, um, and you know, we were asking for a minor modification to, um. Locate the house farther away from the rear property line. Uh, the previous house was closer to the rear property line, uh, by twenty-one feet. And now we're asking for like thirty-four feet and forty inches instead of thirty-eight feet. Um, you know, all, all the considerations that, you know, the, uh, we took was to, um, try to have the house within the same. Location and minimize the grading and, you know, we're doing improvements for fire department and, you know, improving this. You know, the driveway and the access for them. And then, uh, also we are, um, taking into consideration some core upgrades, which is ask, is asking us to kind of. Push a house a little bit away actually from the trail and from the, um, existing retaining wall that the house has in the back. So, you know, pushing the house a little bit farther, uh, towards Cuthbert, so away from the, from the park. Um, and based on that, you know, we're following, uh, the, um, the slope of the property. So we, you know, some of, uh, the areas that we are capturing has to do with the, uh, uh, with the topography. And, um, so, so we will ask you to reconsider, reconsider, um, our project and, um, you know. And, I mean, we are, uh, here to also listen to any, you know, um, considerations and recommendations. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, before you leave, Daniella, are you still there?
Yes.
That's okay, questions for Daniella from commissioners? Okay, thank you, Dan. Got John?
I'm sorry.
I'll go with David here.
If we, um, extend this and have it come back for a full review, um, what, what? How disadvantageous would that be from the point of view of the applicant?
Is your question to Bonnie?
Uh, it's to whoever was just speaking.
Oh, to Daniella, okay, sorry.
Oh, uh, for review, well, I would take into consideration, you know, you're, um, I mean, I was looking depth, you know, the, the. How close is to the park and what i- if there's something that it could be done about it, you know? Uh, but basically, um, from our standpoint, you know, we're a little bit farther from the park than the original house. By at least ten feet, which is part of the minor modification that we are requesting, you know? So, and in that sense, um, and, um, I think, oh, oh, you know, from, you know. Taken from the maps, from the city, um, from the county, um, probably the hu- I mean, the house. The finished floor of the house is probably thirty feet below where that trail is closest to the proper, I mean, to the house. You know, probably, I would say twenty feet from, um, the roof line of the house. So we didn't think that that will affect the views from the trail.
Okay.
Other questions, John, did you have your hand up?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that she had checked the county E S H A maps on the county L C P. Which adjoins this property and the county L C P maps, map it as E S H A. And our L I P three point one five C says, in no case shall we, uh. Be easement, a hundred foot easement, be less, be less than a hundred feet, in no case, we have no. No ability to change that.
Chair Jennings, um.
Yes, Bonnie.
Richard can address a number of these items, um, whenever the commissioners are finished with the questions.
Okay, well, we finished with, I think, with our questions for Daniella, we had another speaker, Kathleen?
That is correct, we have Dana Growich.
Dana?
Hi, everybody, um, good evening commissioners, I just wanted to reach out and, um. Let, uh, the Colby family know that, uh, I'm feeling a lot of empathy for them right now in this process. Um, and I would hope that, eh, the commissioners, if you find that this project suits and, and. Um, adheres to the, the planning department's recommendation. Um, that you'll bring this family back to our neighborhood, um, we're really excited to kind of get this, this street rebuilt and, um. And I hope that you guys will let that through, thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh, any questions for, uh, for, um, who did I just have? Sorry, for Dana. No, okay, um, anybody else, uh, Kathleen wishes to speak?
Uh, nope, that was it.
Okay, so Trevor, you had some remarks? Bonnie said.
Richard.
I'm sorry, Richard, I, yeah, you were looking like a deer in a headlight there, Richard.
Good evening, Chair Jennings, members of the commission, if I could have, uh, my PowerPoint, please? And the next slide, please? The subject property is the parcel you see in blue here, and to answer one of the questions that came up. Um, if we were to bring this back for a full hearing, you would be seeing the same project. And we'd be adding at least a month to it, uh, for these folks. And I'd like to remind the commission too that we haven't received any comments about size, because that was one issue that came up. And so wanted to kind of give a bit of a context of the property and the reason why it's administrative. And why staff did, uh, look at the issue in the L I P, it's actually three point six about parkland setbacks. And the reason why one wasn't required for this. So as you can see, this property is surrounded by development that has fuel modification. To the north of it, in the upper right-hand corner of the screen, uh, is a water tank. And water tanks do have fuel modification, that's above the fire road trail there. To the right, there is a single-family home and to the left, there is another single-family home. Uh, those three structures mentioned all have a fuel modification zone and that's evident in this two thousand seventeen picture. Because you see, uh, the mustard grass growing there and.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, Commissioner Mazza.
Trevor, this is a, uh, this is a consent item. And I don't think it's proper for us to hear it at this point. What I pointed out is that there's missing elements in the staff report, not that we argue the. Uh, um, item here tonight, because as I, the reason why I did pull it is because we are lacking evidence. And, and we're not supposed to hear details of items on consent items, correct?
This is, I believe us, the, the staff report, Richard, is limited to a description of the project, so it can be understood by the commission whether. They want to pull it and would be appropriate to pull for a C D P. I, I think you're trying to answer the general questions about the project, we're not getting into it, into an extensive discussion about it. But the details of the project itself, uh, can be presented to the commission for its consideration, otherwise there's not anything for them to go on.
Understand. So just getting back to it, just to give, uh, the setting, this is the home. I may have the next slide. And in this slide and in the next slide, uh, is just to illustrate the. Uh, there is a question about how staff looked at neighborhood standards for the height and size of the home. The purpose of this slide and the next one, if I may have that as well, just to show the contact of the street. Uh, this is on the same street as, as the previous home that was looked at at the last meeting. And if I could have the next go two slides. I believe it's the next slide after this one. I wanted to also point out that in the staff report, we calculated, uh, the square footage of the home. Actually about six hundred square feet larger than it is, the total T D S F number is correct. It's how staff arrived at it, there was an error and that error was in the garage. We said it was a six thousand square foot home with an attached garage, with a detached garage or attached garage. It was another six hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Um, that garage was included in that square footage, so the house, the number we give you there in the report is actually the total. It's, uh, not the garage, the house separate from the garage. And the next slide is just reflective of the correspondence we received this afternoon. Uh, which was something the commission was looking for, which was the neighborhood analysis. Um, however, these numbers, since staff is not able to validate these numbers. So that we're comparing it exactly to our total development square footage. Uh, these numbers come from the L A County Assessor's Office, it's reflective of square, habitable square footage. Um, garages most likely are not counted, nor would they be counting, uh, covered overhangs. Uh, be as staff does with total development square footage. Um, if there are any other questions, be glad to answer them about this project.
Thank you, Richard. Um, well, the issue, as I said, is whether or not three votes to bring this back for a full C D P. Uh, John?
I just want to make the point that we have to make certain findings to approve a C D P. And one of those findings is neighborhood character. And in the staff report, all it says is there's one or two stories houses in the neighborhood. Well, every single neighborhood in Malibu that I know of has one or two story houses. So that is an irrelevant factor for us to make this finding on. We also have to make a finding that.
A minute ago, you insisted that we not talk about the merits of this item and, and.
Well.
The only issue before us now is whether there are three votes to bring the matter back for a full C D P hearing. At that time, that will be an appropriate part of the discussion.
Oh, okay, when, when are we going to do that?
I'm saying, the, the, the idea is that you, somebody, I assume you, will make a motion that the matter be brought back for a full C D P hearing.
Okay, I will make a motion that the matter be brought back for a full C D P hearing with a staff report. That covers all the requirements of the L I P, including three point one five.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, I have a quick question though, um, I do have some other questions that came up as I was reviewing this. Um, I'm assuming then for how we want to run this is that as the revised, uh, staff report comes out, I just work with Richard, whoever is the appropriate planner. To go through those questions instead of doing it now, correct?
That would be, yes, if, if there are substantial questions that you feel need to be addressed by staff, that would probably be the way to do it. Is that, Trevor, you're leaning forward, like you have something to add to that?
Yeah, if you have a, a, a quick question that would affect your vote about whether to bring it back, you, you can raise it now, otherwise. Um, you know, this will come back as a full C D P and you can ask, you know, we, we can have full analysis and in-depth, um, questions at that point.
No, I, I think I don't need more for the bring it back decision, there are some other things I'd like to see in the report, but I'll work with that as it, as it's developed.
Alright, so the motion has been moved and seconded, is there further discussion? Would you call the roll, Kathleen? The motion is to bring the matter back for a full C D P hearing.
Could you please repeat the mover and seconder mind about?
The mover was John Mazza and the seconder was Chris Marks.
Thank you. Commissioner Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Wile?
No.
Chair, uh, Commissioner Uring?
Uh, yes.
Motion.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion carried three to two, that concludes item, whatever it was, three B two, three, sorry. And, uh, that concludes the consent calendar. We're now at, um, Kathleen, this brings us to the item. Four A, the coastal development permit seventeen dash one one eight with the two variances, twenty dash oh oh four and twenty dash oh oh five. This is the Paradise Cove wastewater, uh, issue, it's twenty-eight, one twenty-eight Pacific Coast Highway. Staff report, please.
Good evening, again, this is Lily Rudolph, next slide, please. Sorry, just one second. Okay, so the subject property is known as the Paradise Cove Mobile Home, Home Park and Beach Cafe. P C H is located to the north of the property and the Pacific Ocean is to the south. And the property is just east of Point Doom and it's about seventy acres in size, next slide, please. On the site are approximately two hundred and fifty-six mobile home units scattered throughout the property. There is a beach cafe, which is identified as the number two, next to the, the ocean. There is also a, um, an office and a community room. You can see Paradise Cove Road running through the property, that road provides public access to the beach from P C H. And other amenities are shown on, on the numbered legend, next slide. So two onsite wastewater treatment systems or O W S currently serve the site. One is for the mobile home park units and the other is for the beach cafe. The property has been subject to several directives by the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. To improve water quality related to the onsite wastewater treatment. A cease and desist order was issued in two thousand sixteen and was amended twice to extend the deadlines to address these directives. These orders require that the property owner limit discharges of effluent by installing a, an upgraded wastewater treatment plant. Which is the subject of the C D P, so, uh, approval of the C D P would address these directives. The most recent extension set the deadline for February. The most recent extension set the deadline for February 3rd, 2020. There was a planning commission hearing scheduled in on March 30th that had to be continued due to the COVID-19 issue. And so the applicant is working with the regional called, regional water quality control board to push this date back to into the future. The applicant has commenced construction of the wastewater treatment system to address the cease and desist disorder. And that was done obviously prior to the approval of the CDP. While the majority of the work has been done, the, the new upgraded system is not yet operational. Also, as part of the planning process, staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And this is due to the project's proximity to onsite ESHA and the property's history of cultural resources in the area. Next slide. The major components of the project include a recycled water plant, a sludge and disinfection building and electrical equipment. And this area, which is circled in red, is referred to as the upgraded wastewater treatment plant. And this is in the site of the existing mobile home park OWTS, not on the northern portion of the site adjacent to PCH. And then circled in red. The project also involves repiping of the beach treatment of the beach cafe treatment system and abandonment of one tank in the beach cafe parking lot that circled in yellow. And repiping and partial demolition of the beach cafe secondary treatment system on the eastern portion of the property that's shown in blue. And then a 1,400 foot long pipeline going from the red circle to the blue circle. And that connects the upgraded wastewater treatment plant to the beach cafe secondary treatment system. And that's highlighted in purple. As you can see, it runs along PCH down to the secondary treatment system for the beach cafe. Next slide, please. So going through all of these components really quickly. This is the location of the mobile home park OWTS. Next slide. And the plans showing the electrical alcove, which is to the, to the left of the recycled water plant with the retaining wall around it, the recycled water plant and the sludge and disinfection building. Next slide. And going down to the beach cafe parking lot. Next slide. Is, and you can see the parking lot stripes here. The applicant is abandoning one of the tanks underground and doing some repiping. Next slide. And on the eastern side of the property is location of the secondary beach cafe treatment system. Next slide. And this page of the plans show repiping of that system and the next slide. And this shows a partial demolition of that secondary treatment system. Next slide. So the 1,400 foot long underground pipeline connects the wastewater treatment plant to the modified beach cafe treatment system. And the pipeline installation involved digging a two foot wide 18 inch deep trench. And the area was restored to pre-existing conditions once the pipeline was installed. I should note that per code, these types of pipelines are required to be underground. So there was no alternative option to have it above ground. Next slide. And this shows the pipeline route going from the upgraded wastewater treatment system to the modified beach cafe treatment system. You can see it running along PCH and then dropping down. Next slide. So the peak capacity of the new upgraded wastewater treatment system is 100,000 gallons per day. And this is an increase to the existing mobile home park and beach cafe OWTS. The system will be used to generate recycled water for landscaping irrigation and sludge will be enclosed in tanks and removed offsite. Next slide. The subject CDP application is for the upgraded wastewater treatment plant only. It does not allow for an additional number of mobile home units or increased capacity for the beach cafe. The previously approved CUP for the beach cafe allows for up to 294 seats for the beach cafe and that is remaining unchanged. Next slide. The project involves a variance for a reduction of the front yard setback. And the, the main wastewater treatment plant is located approximately three feet from the property line, which runs and is adjacent to PCH, which is a designated scenic highway. The site was selected because it is the location of the previous mobile home park OWTS and results in the least amount of ground disturbance and impacts to biological and cultural resources and mobile home park residents. You can see in this slide a photo of the wastewater treatment plant along PCH. The photo is taken from PCH. Next slide. And this is another photo of the, of the project from PCH. Next slide. The structures are partially visible from PCH and do not significantly affect scenic or visual resources. South facing views from PCH of the project, so towards the ocean, consists of a screen chain link fence, mobile home parks and mature trees. Prior to the construction of the treatment plant, there were no ocean views over the project site. Next slide. And I should note that that was a before and after photo of, of the project. The project also involves a second variance for encroachment into ESHA. The project plans, and you can see the project plans here depict oak trees surrounding the pipeline route. The oak woodland is considered ESHA and the trees are also protected native trees. The pipeline route was determined with input from the applicant's consulting biologist to reduce impacts to those trees. And the route was marked and fencing was installed around nine trees. And no trees were removed throughout the process. The purpose of the fencing was to protect the trees during construction and installation of the pipeline. Next slide. Planning staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration that includes four mitigation measures to address potential impacts to the native trees. These includes the middle of a tree report. Annual monitoring of trees for 10 years. You'll see in the draft MND that we cited monitoring of nine trees. We received clarification from the city biologists that it should actually be six trees that are protected that do require monitoring. So we will revise the resolution to address that. On the other two mitigation measures involve replacement tree planting if the trees do lose their health or vigor or payment of in lieu fees if replacement tree planting is not feasible. Next slide. Mobile home parks are subject to development standards established by the California Department of Housing and Community Development or HCD and local regulations established by state law. Local regulations are applicable to mobile home parks are limited to zoning districts, density perimeter walls and setbacks and parking requirements. So total development square footage maximum and permeable coverage maximums are not applicable to the subject CDP. Next slide. As discussed in the agenda report and the mitigated negative declaration, there were five previously recorded cultural resources nearby, but not within the actual project boundary. The site has been previously disturbed and, and subsequent to the project taking place, a reconnaissance level survey, field survey was conducted by a qualified archaeologist and and a, and record search was also conducted and no remains were identified throughout that process. Next slide. The MND mitigated declaration concluded that the project would have no potential to significantly degrade the quality of the environment that no cumulative impacts would occur and that no substantial evidence, there is no substantial evidence of significant effect on the environment. Next slide. The city made the initial study MND available to the public for the required 30 day circulation period. And during that time, four comment letters were received from the regional water quality control board, Caltrans, CDFW and the applicant during the public comment period. Next slide. AB 52 or Assembly Bill 52 establishes a formal consultation period process for California tribes regarding tribal cultural resources. These are for projects that are subject to CEQA. The consultation process must be completed before the CEQA document can be certified. So the city sent formal notifications to five tribes who have requested notification from the city for such projects. The city did conduct a formal consultation with the Ferdinando Tapium Band of Mission Indians. And that consultation concluded on February 14th. And the Barbara, Barbara, Barbareño Ventranio Band of Mission Indians responded subsequent to the 30 day timeline. We did exchange emails with a representative. However, no consultation occurred. City staff had been trying to reach out to some comments and, and those comments were never officially obtained. But staff did complete our required AB 52 consultation. Next slide. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution to adopt the initial study MND and to approve the project. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Very much. Disclosures of ex parte communications, please. Steve? Steve, you're muted.
Done.
John?
I did talk to Richard about this this afternoon, just a quick review of the staff report. Nothing new.
Chris?
At the time, just shortly after the Woolsey fires, I did talk some to the, the staff at Paradise Cove. We were, I live in a community above them and we were impacted by the floods. I did, um, it's, we weren't discussing this project, obviously, but I did learn some things about kind of historic flooding patterns there, which I think will be relevant to our discussion today.
David? What did you learn that wasn't in the staff report?
Say that again.
What did you learn that wasn't?
Just, I have concerns about how, what the behavior of Ramirez Canyon would be below PCH and how that could impact the pipeline across the ESHA, ESHA region. I don't see that documented well, you know, that the mitigated tech talks more about, excuse me, less than significant impact in a flood scenario. I just want to talk through a worst case flood scenario, which we almost had. So that, that's my concern.
David?
Uh, yes. Last week, this was, last week I went to the site to walk around and see it and spoke with Steve Dahlberg there from a social distance. And basically just went through some matters that are in the staff report.
I suppose I should, this is like an old nightmare coming back for, back in the early days of cityhood, back in the late nineties and early 2000s that this, the issue of wastewater control at Paradise Cove was one that, that consumed an enormous amount of time and energy in the city. And so I did have a lot of background arising out of it at that time. I'm, I'm kind of glad to see that in fact, the regional water quality control board has managed to bring the project as forward as they have. Apart from that, there's nothing that's not on the staff report. Okay, we're ready for the open the public hearing. And Kathleen, you told me that we had Barbara Bradley and Steve Dahlberg and Sedina Banks. Are those the, the applicant crew?
That's the applicant team. Steve Dahlberg intends to speak with Barbara Bradley and Sedina Banks available for questions. And then we have a member of the public, Craig Hill, speaking separately.
Okay, so the applicant crew has 15 minutes. You can use all of it or you can reserve time for rebuttal if you wish. So who would like to go first? I guess we're going to have to find that out, Catherine.
Steve Dahlberg was the intended person.
Okay, Steve, go on.
Hi, this is Steve Dahlberg. Can you hear me?
Can, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the commission. I'd like to thank you for your time in considering the application before you. I would also like to specifically thank Lily Rudolph for her Herculean efforts in getting up to speed on this project after being brought onboard at the 11th hour and somehow moving it forward to this hearing in such a short timeframe. Given the thoroughness which, with which the staff report was prepared, I'll keep my comments brief and just touch on a couple of highlights. As you know, the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant began as an update or revision to the then existing waste discharge requirements, the WDRs imposed by the state water board. Paradise Cove Land Company, in an early meeting with water board staff, offered to go above and beyond what was initially being required by the water board. Paradise Cove offered to leap ahead and design and construct a new treatment plant, which would allow us to reuse treated wastewater for landscape irrigation. The revised waste discharge requirements were approved by the board in September 2016. Not surprisingly, the water board is as anxious to see this project reach completion as quickly and as possible as are we. Water board staff was tasked with monitoring the project each step of the way and was intimately involved in maintaining the schedule. Water board staff participated in meetings with city of Malibu staff in an attempt to monitor progress as well. An emphasis on communication has been an important aspect of the project from the Paradise Cove standpoint. We firmly believe that the resulting project is ideal for Paradise Cove, the surrounding community, and most importantly, the environment. I think the lack of any serious opposition is indicative of this. We've put a tremendous amount of time, energy, and especially money in getting to this point and are excited to see it come to fruition in the near future. As I said before, the staff report is extremely thorough. And in the interest of brevity, I'll conclude my comments here. Also in attendance, as you said, is Barbara Bradley, the project engineer. We're both available to answer any questions and we'll reserve our, the rest balance of our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And we had Craig.
Yeah, hi, thanks. A lot of quick questions. So you might like to take some notes. Some of these are clarifications for staff. Some might be for the commission to ponder. I don't understand why this is an after the fact permitting, why, why the city took so long to weigh in or stop the work. That situation is not clear. Is this inadequate code enforcement or what? I'm not sure if that could be clarified. And, and if so, is the lesson, go ahead and do the work without a permit. And if you do get caught, no big deal. There's no fines or in lieu fees or anything after the fact for a flouting of the code. Apparently CEQA didn't review alternatives. We didn't get that far in the, past the MND. So specifically alternative locations, the neighbor letter says that there are many alternative locations. The neighbor listed seven items not addressed. Those looked plausible. That's attachment six, PDF page 193. How do you get three foot setback from the property line? The rationale is reduced impact on bio and cultural, but there's already compromised all over potentially available, according to the neighbor. And what about the aesthetic impact of the small industrial facility in a scenic area along PCH? 43,000 square feet of development area. It says it's existing, but hasn't it been increased for this project? And there's no site plan review. Neighborhood character is not required. Is that just because it's not over 18 feet? I mean, it's an industrial facility, but 18 feet, that's all that matters. This says no construction on slopes three to one or flatter, but aren't there steep slopes between the parking lot and the eastern portion? With respect to archaeological resources, how deep is any excavation? Does it go beyond the 18 inches for the pipe anywhere? That's probably fine, but if it went much deeper than that, then they should have had an active monitor probably given the site. The grading is listed as 1,265 cubic yards total on page 13 of the report. Is that accurate? Is that accurate? And none of that is below a few feet? It says it's listed in Attachment Two, but I don't see it there. Elsewhere, it mentions that it's buried three inches deep, not the eighteen inch that I think would probably be required. So there's some confusion about that. And are four inch pipes adequate for the volume and distance? Won't they be subject to some inherent impedance at that length of the way fire hoses are over distance, for example? And I too was curious about the flood scenario that Commissioner Marks pointed out. So finally, just to reiterate, what recourse is there in looking at this after the fact? And how can we prevent that kind of thing from happening in future? Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. All right, so you have some additional time left, Kathleen. I think you may know how much. Steve, if you would like to respond?
Oh gosh, well, that was a mouthful.
If you can hold just a moment, please, while I get your time back up.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. You have twelve and a half minutes remaining.
Okay. Alternatives. We did look at, into alternatives back in late two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, as far as types of treatments. And factor into that size of the facility, energy costs, visual impacts, odors, noise. We looked at numerous types of systems before, before landing on this. And just as an example of one reason we chose the system we did, I, I took a trip up to, I probably butcher the way, the way you're supposed to say it, but it's Le Auberge, it's a resort up in Calistoga. And they have a very similar system, same manufacturer, essentially the same system. Sitting right in the middle of their facility there, in the middle of their resort, their hotel, right next to the pool, right next to where they do weddings. It's, if you've been there, it's located in a small intimate canyon, the kind of place where noise bounces back, reflects everywhere. Odors would be a problem and this is a very high end resort. And they actually, they, they love the, the system. They were very happy with it. So that was, that was huge. I can, I would let my engineer expand on it if you have questions, but the type of treatment is very similar to what the City of Malibu is using down in the civic center. The MBR technology. What? The, the project itself, the construction itself was undertaken at the same time that we were doing a housing and community development program that upgraded and got us out of the utility business. The gas and electrical lines, the entirety of that system are now, are now operated by Southern California Gas and Southern California Edison. And as a part of that, we were, we were required to, after finding Chumash resources, I can't get into too much detail on it, but we had several monitors there for a significant portion of the construction of this system. They were onsite every day and not standing where the septic system construction was necessarily, but not concerned with it either. Trying to think of some of the other questions raised. The, the Ramirez Creek flood, flood control, I, maybe staff will want to, want to respond to that in part, but the pipe is sitting up closer to Pacific Coast Highway than it is down near Ramirez Creek. And if you're familiar with that area, you would see that there's, there's virtually no way. I mean, short of Pacific Coast Highway being washed out right there, the pipe can't possibly be impacted by, regardless of the rain event. And, and as Chris, as Commissioner Marks said, we had, we had a pretty good sized rain event there early last year. And there was no impact. It never was near where this pipe is. I think, I think I hopefully covered everything. If there was something else you want to hear from me, please let me know.
Steve, let me suggest that you address the issue of why this comes to us as an after the fact application.
Okay. The, the reason we are where we are is, as we said, in late two thousand sixteen, the state water board revised our WDRs and put some very strict deadlines in that. And Chair Jennings, as you alluded to, you were, you were there fifteen to twenty years ago during what was an incredibly ugly and, and painful process for getting that septic system and that wastewater treatment system, which was an upgrade to the primary treatment system that was then in place. Based on some of the review of what happened at that time and conversations with city staff, we decided that we couldn't allow that to happen again this time. And so we worked with city staff, the building department, specifically Craig George, to, to present our project to the City of Malibu in spring of two thousand seventeen. And the building department, basically every department other than the planning department immediately began their review under a concurrent submittal process, which planning department and building departments, sorry, environmental health department all agreed to allow happen in this to try to expedite the process. So we received approval from all non-planning department departments. Building, Public Works, Environmental Health, Geology, Biology, all approved and were then just standing by, waiting for the planning department to complete their review. So we didn't just start it and then, and then after the fact come in, we submitted the project prior to construction. And just because I think it's important, reiterate that we had the approval after, after in-depth review, as would, as is done typically of any project, we had the approval of every department other than the planning department. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. I, I assume you may want to mention the fact that regional water quality was pressing you for action.
Absolutely, and they're listening in on this right now.
All right. Just a second, John. Does that conclude your presentation then?
Yes, I, I still, I still have six minutes left in case there's any other questions.
Well, we'll, we'll stop the clock. If there are other questions, they don't go against your time, but, but John, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, my big question on this whole project was, how did it get built without approvals? And I guess what Steve is saying is, oh gee, everybody approved it except the planning department. And so therefore I built it. Now the question is, why did the planning department know anything about it or did they? And it's really hard for me to believe that you can build a building right on Pacific Coast Highway and there's two hundred and fifty-six units around it and houses being built next to it who go through the, when we, when we viewed the Lorraine Jobs' house, I remember seeing those pits and wondering what they were. So the question is, how complicit is the city? And this is a question for Bonnie and Trevor in allowing this project to be completed without the public having the rights to review it. Now, Steve is saying one thing. I don't know if that's particularly true when the planning department is, but it's very hard for me to believe that every department in the city, except for the planning department, knew about it. So did they? And did you not know about it? And were inspections done?
I'm happy to address that. The applicant did meet with staff and we discussed what would be necessary in order to get the coastal development permit approved for this project. It was always clear that a coastal development permit was necessary prior to starting construction. I think everybody knows that that is the case. Initially, there were some issues with the right type of application to get submitted that occurred at some point because the, the concern was water quality and getting that corrected as soon as possible. We did authorize the applicant to submit concurrently into building plan check while the coastal development permit was being processed. What that project or process involves is the applicant submitting construction plans concurrently through the plan check process while the coastal development review process is happening. It does not authorize anyone to start construction before the coastal development permit is approved. So we were aware of the concurrent submittal process and authorized that to go forward. That did get completed. However, the applicant still chose to start construction in advance of that. When, at some point, the, when we, when, let's see, that when the building official became aware that the construction had already begun, a stop work order would, code enforcement was notified and a stop work order was issued. The project had been mostly constructed by that point and no further work has, as far as I know, no further work has occurred since then.
I question, on, on page seven or thirty-three of the staff report, it said, the city biologist surveyed the location of the pipeline and the grading and construction. And construction was completed and visually assessed the pipeline and the Esha. Now, is that after the stop work order or is that before the stop work order?
That was the consulting biologist. That was the applicant's biologist, not the city biologist.
Well, is that an error in the staff report then? It says the biologist.
I'll check that, but it should have been the consulting biologist.
Okay, so as this was built, or my question is, no city staff person went out and inspected whether the electrical was done right, whether the plumbing was done right, where the pits were done, done right, whether it hurt or any of that stuff?
Mr. Mazza, the, the actual permitting of this project actually will come from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The, the city's building department will not be issuing construction permits or conducting any inspections for this.
So the Department of Transportation is going to go out and see if that pipeline has the right seal, so it doesn't leak, etc.
The Department of Housing and Community Development is, is responsible for the permitting of the construction.
What about the inspection?
They're responsible for inspections and permitting.
So, so this, they go through all our city departments on approving it, but they're responsible for it. Is that correct?
That's correct. I confirmed with our city building official whether they would be issuing permits or it would be HCD and she indicated it would be HCD that would be doing permits and inspections.
Then why did they come to us?
I don't know. I don't, they may not have been certain of the permitting at the time either. Mr. Dahlberg might be able to address that. I, I was not aware that they would be responsible for that at the time that we authorized the concurrent submittal.
Because I looked at our staff report and we have reviews by all these departments.
They do have, all of the city departments have authority for reviewing or local coastal program conformance reviews. So all of the development standards that are present in the LCP, they're responsible to review the project for those purposes.
For example, the grading permit, which I didn't see, is not a permit. It's just a review and nobody has to follow it. Or the biology.
Everything that is part of the coastal development permit application, which, and you know, as you're all very well familiar, the local coastal program includes chapters on grading, on wastewater treatment, on water quality, on zoning. So all of those standards apply to the project. And so all of those standards are, they still have to submit plans that are reviewed for conformance with those standards. And that's what you, is before you tonight, whether those, whether these plans, this project complies with all of the standards of the local coastal program.
So when I see the Christine, the geologist, say, this is okay, you can go up to sixty-six thousand gallons a day. And then the staff report says they're going to do a hundred. Who corrects that? Because they're over by thirty percent or forty percent. Oh, the geologist has never looked at that other thirty-three thousand gallons.
The city geologist reviewed the project and found that it meets all of the geotechnical requirements. If there is a difference in the, in the standard between geotechnical and what the wastewater treatment capacity is, those could be two different standards.
No, no, I'm saying his review said sixty-six thousand. It's right in the staff report in the back.
John, let me, let me switch and see if there's other people who wanted to weigh in on this, the comments. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, you know, this, and I'm trying to understand because it, it's a little bit confusing. You're saying that, who, who gives the final permits for this project? You're saying it's not the city, it's another organization. Is that correct?
Well, I just want to, I want to make sure that we're all speaking the same language because there's, you know, permit, this kind of permit and that kind of permit. The coastal permit entitlement is what is before you tonight. The actual construction inspections and approval comes from the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, so the process that was going on where they were building, and how long did they start building this before the city put a stop order in? How, how, how long did that process take place? Do you recall?
I, you know what, I don't have that date. They, they were substantially complete with the project before we were aware that it's, before we were, before planning and code enforcement were aware that it was already under construction.
So all the other departments in the city knew they were doing this and they didn't tell planning?
No, they, no, I don't believe that other departments knew that construction was underway. They were, they were just reviewing project plans to see if they met the city's codes and requirements. Nobody authorized them to start construction.
And, and go back, you know, the, there's no penalty if they do that, right? Is that?
There's, there's two penalties potentially. One is any kind of code enforcement or enforcement action by the city or by the coastal commission for construction without a coastal development permit. The second is if, for instance, tonight, if you can't make
One at a time, Steve, come on.
Let me finish. And the second is if you don't approve the project tonight, if you don't make the findings for the variances or the coastal development permit is requested, then they're going to have to go back with a new project or they'll have to rip it out and, and build it in a way that's compliant with the coastal development permit. They need a coastal development permit in order to build what they have constructed there right now. So.
So the only penalty is if they did something incorrectly, they would have to go back and correct it. But the fact that they started without a permit, built it for a couple of years, got ninety percent of it done, no harm, no foul. That's, that's how it works.
It's not how it works, but in terms of what's before the commission tonight is whether you can make the findings for the coastal development permit. This is the, this isn't the code enforcement body who's going to take action for what happened there.
I'm just, I'm just, I mean, if I'm a developer or want to do construction, do I go out and start the construction and get as far as I can? And if I get caught, as long as I haven't done anything really wrong, they're going to slow me down a little bit, but there's no penalty. Is that how it works?
The code enforcement process on this application is not complete yet. The, the unfortunate part about this whole thing is that there is a water quality problem that needs to be solved. And so our focus right now is on moving the CDP application forward so that the project can get completed and start doing what it's supposed to do to improve water quality in the Paradise Cove area.
Moving on here, Chris.
I got one more, one more question.
Come back to you. I'll come back to you. Everybody gets to say, everybody gets to say what they want to say. You just don't get to say it exactly when you want to say it. Chris?
Well, I guess just to start, the way that I'm thinking about this then, from what I'm hearing, is this is almost like an ECDP and, you know, because we're proving it after the fact. I mean, that, that's kind of And, you know, because we're approving it after the fact. I mean, that, that's kind of the situation we're in, more or less, Trevor, with you kind of maybe, maybe not.
Well, it's, if an ECDP, they come in and they actually get permission from the city. Here they have no permission. So you're, you're looking at something that was constructed, but you're looking at these plans and whether you can make the findings. And if you can't make the findings, then you can't approve the, the application for the coastal development permit and the variances.
Okay, then I'd ask Lily and probably some input from, I think it was Barbara, whoever the site engineer was. Amul, if you can bring up the, the slides that represent the, um, the layout of sites one, two, three, and then where the septic runs between those. I just want to understand, and I'll start to describe that as it's coming up. So Barbara, you can, I think Barbara would be ready to talk to this. I'm, I'm just concerned with, like, why, why did we choose not to run connectivity between sites one and two instead of one over to three? Especially if that's black water, not gray, that's going from that pre-processing site, etc. And also I, I still don't understand how the effluent gets from both the restaurant and the residences up to which treatment site. So where does all that, what are all those flows? The main reason to bring this up, I still come back to, I, 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 you know, guesstimate that we were within maybe twenty minutes to thirty minutes of having like a catastrophic failure of that hillside above this restaurant. And if that came storming down and hit PCH, I don't know where it'd go, but it looks something like what Montecito looked like. And I don't want to try to guess what that damage would be. And so if we've got, you know, by design, a black water pipe going across something which could, you know, obviously it's, it's a mitigation that's got to be considered in my book, but it could have a catastrophic failure. What would that look like versus an alternative plan? And, you know, since this is coming out for the fact, I don't even know if we can do anything about it. But that's what comes to mind for me is what is the movement of the, kind of the, the, the untreated effluent? It's coming out of which areas? I don't feel that was kind of mapped very well. And if someone could explain if that's even been touched or considered by this plan at all? Or because it looks like, you know, obviously treatment was moved, that's really where my, my mind is going on this one.
Harper, can you pull up the PowerPoint presentation, please? Slide five. And, and I'm going to ask the applicant to respond to the questions regarding alternative.
Yeah. And, and also just to understand, is site two an actual site or that, that treatment system now? Or was that just where the prior tanks were and that's now been taken offline? That's something that also to make sense in the, in the plans.
Hi, this is Barbara Bradley and thank you. I'm very pleased to be able to help you to better understand the physical layout and the thought processes and efforts we went in to protect the environment. And certainly, we would not have chosen a route that passes over the creek in any place where it is daylighted. One of the benefits of passing it parallel to PCH is when PCH was constructed, that whole area was filled in and the creek that was flowing freely through there was put in a pipe. And that pipe is three, thirty feet underground around PCH. It is not underground to the north of PCH. And further down where it comes in between the mobile homes, it is also daylighted once again where it is in a concrete channel that goes out to the shore. So what we have is an area that would not be flooded. On, on the north side, PCH would hold it back. And then the majority of the water, of course, was going through the concrete channel. That was one hundred feet to the south of the pipe crossing. The other thing I would like to help you understand is that the Beach Cafe wastewater does cross. And it has done this for, oh, I'd say it's eighteen years now. At least it has, it crosses where the bridge crosses that allows visitors and residents to cross over the creek. And that has, that bridge has never washed out. So that is where it crosses and it goes up to the bluff to the east. And that is where the treatment system is currently located. Some of those treatment processes, all of the, actually the majority of them will be removed once we are able to bring the wastewater over to the new recycled water plant, which is the red circle.
Okay, so then, so from site two, that is marked as primary treatment. So is that hitting like tanks there and then coming across up to site three, crossing the creek right at the footbridge near your guard station?
It's corrected. It's primary treated wastewater at that point.
Treated, okay. And then the quality moving between sites one and three is in a similar state. So you're basically just bringing a kind of two central processing sites at that site. One for the residences, site two for the restaurant, both up to that secondary processing at site three.
That, that is reasonably correct.
Okay. And there was, in terms of kind of planning this out, that site three, how long, had that been put online only as part of this development?
Actually, that has, that's the treatment that's been there for about twenty years.
Got it. So then your decision was, since you had observations about how, what the, the treatment out of waste coming from site one, that was what, going down the, down to the parking lot in near site two before to septic tanks down there?
I actually know that it's always been separate. So the mobile home park has its own permit and its own treatment system. And the Beach Cafe has the same, its own permit, its own treatment system.
And then now the site three is just that secondary for both of them to get what, better processing or something like this? Just to get to that next level quality required by the quality of RWQCB?
Well, actually what it is, is site two goes to site three. And three is where the treatment is for the Beach Cafe. And right now, site one is completely independent. It is only for the mobile home park.
So got it.
Yes.
And then so site three, you're going to now push the, the waste coming out of site one for further treatment at site three. So then the waste coming from sites one and two are both kind of purified to the same level out of site three.
It will all be purified at the same level at site one. So the Beach Cafe wastewater that has some, we could call it advanced primary treatment, will then be conveyed over to site one, which is the one you saw in the photographs along PCH.
Okay. And then which direction does that pipe go between one and three? It goes from one over to three?
It goes from three to one.
Now, three to one, okay.
The new plant is.
Huh. So if, if something comes out of the restaurant, it gets pushed over to site three? And then all of that, everything kind of finalizes at site one?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for, for clarifying that.
David?
Um, gee, I don't know where to start. I thought Craig Hill's list of issues for us to look at was extremely constructive and informative. And I think the frustration that we're all feeling is that the planning commission sort of was hoodwinked here or it wasn't. And I guess I don't really have a clear understanding. If, if they built this without the necessary permits and did it on the sly, meaning the planning commission didn't know about it, that's one thing. If former planning commission staff didn't know about it, didn't do anything about it, that's another thing. But if it's the first that we, the planning commission issued the stop work order very quickly, you know, then I, I mean, I share everybody's frustration and well, you shouldn't be able to just ignore the law and get away with it. And I guess my question to staff is, is there anything beyond? I mean, I understand we cannot approve this, which is probably not too feasible, given that it's essentially done. Are there ways that there can be sanctions along with approval? Certainly it seems to me, I, I mean, I don't know if it's financial or otherwise. Certainly it seems to me that the conditions, some of the conditions for how it will be maintained that are set forth in attachment six from the homeowner who's nearby, can there be conditions put on the maintenance of this project? So that things like traffic noise and maintenance and, you know, when, when sludge will be removed and those sort of things? Can that be part of the conditions that we add on to this? Otherwise, it seems as though this is, you know, we're just sort of whistling in the wind here and it's a done deal. And I, it doesn't feel right on any level.
You, you can attach conditions to the project to deal with mitigation of impacts from the project, but it can't be for, to punish the project, the, any kind of punishment or code enforcement action would come from a different body. Doesn't come from the planning commission.
Does it make sense to consider any of the attachment six conditions for maintenance of this plant as conditions we should think about?
I think that's a staff question, but if staff doesn't have an answer, I'm going to go back to Steve who I cut off earlier on. Steve? Unmute yourself.
Yeah, the, and, and part of this goes to David's question, you know, I, I look at the mitigated negative deck and there are no comments there from any residents. Why is that? Did we send something to them? The people who live near there? Because, you know, we got comments in the staff report regarding, you know, the smell. I've been in the property to the east of that. We did a site visit there when they were constructing it. You could smell it then. I'm just wondering why none of them raised, if, if they got it, why didn't they raise any issues or did they get it?
The project was properly noticed. I can't explain why it was noticed the same way we notice any sequoia initial study. And the public hearing notice was noticed in the, in the typical way that would involve, you know, the typical noticing radius. So I don't have any answer for that. I don't know if outreach was done by the applicant for, I mean, that would make sense to me because their, his constituents. With respect to an earlier question, the, as soon as the planning department and code enforcement staff found out that the project was being constructed without approvals, a stop work order was issued.
Okay, Steve, like Steve Dahlberg, is he available for a question?
Kathleen?
Yes, I'm here.
Steve, when you started building this thing or playing, did you meet with any of your neighbors to talk to them about any issues they may have?
Because, okay, which ones did you talk to? Yeah, several years ago, I, I've spoken with most, if not all of the residents, as I do regularly. I'm here on site every day. Several years ago, gosh, I don't remember the date, but it was likely two thousand seventeen in a resident-wide meeting. We discussed the project and what we were doing. And the reason you haven't heard from anyone, which I think you're familiar enough with Paradise Cove to know that if anybody has an issue with something that we're doing, they're not bashful about letting you know about it. And, and they're excited about the project. There's, I don't know what there would be not to love about this project if you're a resident of Paradise Cove. Just to go, just to kind of skip back as far as, as far as whether or not we just started this project randomly because we figured the best way to get it done was, was to do it in the middle of the night and on weekends when no one would catch us. We made our submittals to the city of Malibu, every department in two thousand seventeen. We have had numerous meetings with, with the planning department and, and administrative staff. Throughout this project, we have had, I believe it will now be three extensions with the Regional Water Quality Control Board in our deadlines. And as, as a part of those extensions, we describe the nature of the project and the status of the project, including construction. That's an integral part of our, of our extensions. If we're not meeting our deadlines, if construction is not progressing, then we don't get our deadlines. We end up in a fight with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Planning department, every department involved in our permit is copied on those extension requests. So it's, you know, it's disingenuous to suggest that nobody down at City Hall knew what we were doing until that stop work order was issued in December of two thousand nineteen, when construction was completed.
I did not know that that was, that the plant was under construction. I do not believe my department knew. It was copied on an extension request to the regional board. It wasn't apparent to me that the project was already under construction.
I'm going to go back to Steve.
Difference of opinion there, but okay. Steve, there's the letter from this Mr. Scott Piper that, that David Wilde mentioned. Have you read that letter? It's attachment six in the staff report.
I have read it. I don't have it in front of me though.
Okay, he listed a number of things, items that he felt were provision should be included in the, in the resolution. Do you, do you look at any of those? Could you? Cause I'd like to know if you have any problems putting those things in.
Well, for instance, he was concerned with, with airborne drops of treated effluent and chemicals and that kind of thing. And, and as I said, this, this treatment system is designed to be infill, to be near homes. As I said, it's, it's up at a resort in, in Calistoga. It's got a cover. I mean, this, this isn't designed to be sitting out in the Mojave Desert with no neighbors.
Yeah, this, this, these comments are more, Steve Dahlberg, these are much more specific than the general comments about, you know, dangers of, of living near a treatment plant. These are things like, you know, the traffic, traffic control to pick up the sludge, noise abatement, maintenance of the plant, how and when will that take place? How often will it be required? Spill containment? This isn't sort of the, the pie in the sky, you know, are there chemicals coming to get us? This is the kind of day-to-day operation of the plant. I'm, I'm not sure there are things in here that, that couldn't be done. You might want to take a look at it and see what you think.
Well, what, I mean, we have an operating permit and a licensed monitor that maintains the system just as we do with the existing system, which has been operating for almost twenty years. In the same location, the new system is, is, is far more progressed in design and, and is more efficient and won't have odors, will be quieter, will have significantly less impact on, on the neighbors. The, the, the only difference it has to do with this, or that he raised, is the sludge truck, which at most will come in once a week. It's similar to a small trash truck. It will back up into the building and remove a container full of sludge and then pull out. And that's it. It's a, it's a very short process. It's, it's less invasive than the trash and recycle trucks that go through weekly.
And I, I might just mention for the other commissioners, because I did walk around there and I'm very sympathetic to someone who says, gee, I live very close to this and I have concerns. But the fact of the matter here is that this, I don't know if it's this person, but the, the trailers that are very close to this new facility are already very close to the old facility because they're built adjacent to one another. So it's, it's hard to say, all of a sudden this nuisance was constructed next to me when, at the time you bought it, it was already there. So I.
Can I ask Trevor a question?
Yes, John.
Trevor, before Bonnie said that the city had no responsibility because this was a trailer, mobile home park. But this, this is a permit for a restaurant in a commercial zone also. And the affluent is part of that. And I don't know how there's, and there's a, it's a separate zone, separate use. And I don't know how the city loses control of inspection rights over a restaurant. And also the, the ability to license and control sewage treatment plant like we do in the civic center. It makes no sense to just say, well, part of it's a trailer park or a mobile home park. That's not a very good exemption. And, and it's not a very good exemption to me to say, our city inspectors can inspect how this was built. We certainly did when, when the restaurant failed, when it had its own system. And we enforced it and we inspected it and we did everything else on it. So why can't we do it now?
Bonnie?
Bonnie? Oh, I I can weigh in here a little bit if you want to expand, Bonnie. But um, what we're dealing with here tonight is the coastal development permit, which is absolutely required. And they knew they needed to have a coastal development permit. So whatever conversations they were having about a plan check process had nothing to do with the coastal development permit that they did not have and they could not start construction on until they had it. Uh, we still have control over that and that is what is at issue tonight in terms of the building permits and inspections to to ensure that what they where they construct there conforms with the plans and with current building standards. There are state limitations about that around trailer, you know, trailer parks like this. I don't know the full reach of that, even there's a restaurant here, if there's some issue there, we can look into that. Um, but that's not really a concern of the planning commission. That's just a jurisdictional issue that the city will sort out whether it was properly done, inspected by HCD staff. Or if there was, it does need to be done by the the city or if the city needs to do part of it. I don't know the answer to that, but it's not before the commission tonight.
I I'm looking at like our geotechnical study that limits it to sixty six thousand. All of a sudden, it's a hundred thousand. We're told we have nothing to do with that. Well, our geotechnical study was on is not correct. And if if we are billing, if we're issuing a CDP and we have a geotechnical study that's no good, we have a fire department approval that expired three years ago. We have a letter from the uh Department of Fish and Wildlife issued less than a month ago that says, this doesn't cut as an MND, you need an EIR. How can we ignore stuff like that? It's not the Department of Transportation.
No.
Whether we need an EIR.
We're talking about different things here. So what I think Bonnie was talking about HCD is what they were, what they control was basically the building permit side of this is the actual construction inspection of the construction after the permitting goes through is how it normally works. They've already done it here, so I don't know what was inspected, when it was inspected, if it was inspected as it was being done. Um, in terms of the coastal development permit, yes, you you look at the evidence before you in terms of the the mitigated negative declaration tonight. If there are concerns with that, you know, you're here to certify if if there's additional mitigation that's required. You know, that's something that you can impose here. If there's a reason that we would need to get a a full blown EIR, I haven't, we need, we need to have some kind of substantial evidence to support why we would need an EIR in the situation. But that is um, the city's role in this case as lead agency on this project.
Okay, uh, but a a superior, a a state agency, I guess it's a state, maybe it's federal agency telling us it's no good.
Mr. Mazza, you've referenced this, um, I think with other staff and I I don't know what letter you're talking about from.
Okay, the letter, I'll tell you, it's March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. It's in the staff report. The paragraph reads, however, the MND does not currently meet CDFW standards. It's a quote. And it was issued twenty eight days ago.
Lily, do you have this letter?
Yes, I'm I'm looking at it now and I can explain. The CDFW letter is a comment letter that was obtained during the public comment period of the MND. And and from what it sounds like is that CDFW staff didn't realize that Ramirez Canyon Creek was is underground in that location. It it reads as though they assume that it is daylighting, which would have a completely different standard than if it was underground, which which it is. So um, you know, based on that, uh, we we concluded that that they misunderstood the the project setting.
The normal technique or the normal, uh, I'm sorry, the normal protocol is to issue the NMD and then people comment on it. And then and then you respond to the comments. And you know, it's not like if anybody comments on it, that's the end of the story. You have to accept it. You comment on it back and then you you know, ultimately it's going to fall to us to make a decision on this. And I'd like to kind of move us on in the direction of of coming up with what it is you want to do uh, with 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 the problems that exist here that you that you feel that exists. Chris?
Yeah, that that's where I was trying to go. I mean, in in looking at kind of something which Mr. Dahlberg stated, as well as what's currently documented, I don't see any operating conditions required by the city, either lining up with the recommendations by this this um, you know, this this citizen's letter or otherwise. And so, I mean, I would just ask, hey, can we add some operating conditions that line up with, you know, ideally what Mr. Dahlberg is already subject to, trying to get as much covered as as possible from that letter. And I'd ask that we have some type of um, like shut off valves at the creek on either side. Because if there is some type of failure, um, whether it be um, up by PCH or down at the lower end, I wouldn't want to see, you know, the the inability to shut that off, uh, to to, you know, to keep things from flowing out of there. Another thought that came up to my mind was that I did see some of the plans where it showed piping along PCH only three inches below grade. I don't know what a standard is, but it seems like, you know, whatever the recommended depth, be it eighteen inches or whatever. Um, I would, I would ask that we start to look at some conditions to be added here if if we're all in agreement with there.
But yeah, and I think we're beyond that point. We have to actually come up with those conditions that we want to ask. And and Trevor has indicated that we can uh, we can uh, offer mitigating conditions if we want to, but we have to actually do them. We have to say that we want to think about it. John?
Well, I take a different tack. I mean, this this project was built and this is not somebody's garage. This is a sewage treatment plant for two hundred and fifty eight houses and a restaurant. And it appears to be. You know, and I I was.
John, what what is it that you want to do?
I would like to get the facts. I'd like to get a really IR. I would like to have some way that something could be inspected rather than assume that Steve Dahlberg's crew did all the inspection properly.
But that.
And I would, you know, I don't know if if that pipe's going to leak or not. And I would also like to verify the use. I think it's from personal observation, walking up and down the beach and going to that restaurant. I know that all the seating in that restaurant is not within the in the original permit. And and I would doubt, and I couldn't prove it, but I'd like to have somebody from staff go down and count the seats instead of just say they're two hundred ninety four, because in two thousand and five, we gave them a permit for two hundred ninety four. And I would like to know what the alternative sites are. There's a whole area in the middle of that park that's vacant. It's tennis courts that are hardly ever used and some other space. Why isn't that an alternative? What other alternatives are there? What what uh, Indian stuff was done? They say, well, the Indians were there, but they weren't necessarily watching. That's not a good answer. Um, this thing is is run on forever illegally. And now all of a sudden, we're in a rush to approve it. And I don't see why we need to be in a rush to approve it without knowing the facts. So I would, I would send it back for an EIR.
Send your motion.
Yeah, I'll move that and I'd like to get an opinion from Trevor on what part of the city uh, it's city, how the city is involved. Because Department of Transportation doesn't do restaurants.
John, it's housing and community development. It's not the Department of Transportation.
Housing and community development has no authority over restaurants. And this is a restaurant. And by the way, a third of the affluent is the restaurant. Okay, so.
State your motion.
My motion is that this be sent back for an EIR and and a evaluation of what's required to give a real CDP. Alternate sites, mitigation, uh, and all that kind of stuff, like a regular thing, rather than taking what they give us and saying, that's okay, it's already done. That's my motion.
Okay, we need to be a little more specific if that's what your motion is going to be to deny the project without prejudice and require an environment, an EIR to be uh, put together. You need to identify what needs to be studied in that EIR, where what the fair argument that there's that there'll be a substantial impact from the project, what that would be. Uh, you need to tell them what they would need to go back to study.
Well, you do a scoping session.
No, you need to, I mean, at this point, we need to do, we have.
At this point.
Sessions been done, there's initial study. What is the evidence that you rely?
What scoping session?
No, you have a scoping session before the before the initial study. That's already.
Was there one? Was there one posted? Was there a forty five day notice? Were the were all the residents invited? I doubt it. I never heard a word about it. There was no scoping, legal scoping session.
John, the council's telling you what it is we need to do. You can't argue with with with.
Well, I can ask Bonnie, was there a scoping session?
No, I don't believe a scoping session is required. This was, an initial study was prepared and because there was no um, fair argument or no evidence of a fair argument that a significant impact would occur based on the initial study that was conducted. Um, that's what's presented before you now.
We got a letter for that comment period from the fishing game department saying it doesn't cut it. Okay?
No.
Official comment.
You're miss you're misstating what happened. The the fish and wildlife department made a comment. The comment was addressed and they did not, they had no further comment on the application. There was a misunderstanding. It's clear from their letter that they thought that the that this was a typical stream that runs in between a bed and a bank. And this is in this point where the um, the pipeline crosses the stream, it's completely underground.
And we assume that, we never checked with them, did we?
They responded, we responded to their comments and they have not followed up further.
The comments came in the last day, okay?
Right.
So my point is, is the, okay, my motion is the findings can't be made that this complies with the LCP. And there was a comment letter that section four point seven finding B by the by our own bio review staff says it doesn't meet those findings. Okay, so this project should be denied because it does not meet the LCP findings, specifically section four point seven B, according to the bio review by the city of Cal uh, Malibu.
Yeah. Is the economic, the minimum economic use for a residential lot. So this property has been developed for decades. It doesn't, it's legal nonconforming with respect to that finding.
Let's let's wait, see if we got a second to the motion here and then they can have discussion about it, but we have to move this forward. Is there a second to John's motion?
I need clarity on what what we're looking at here. What um, what are you citing, John, for that uh?
By a review letter.
Okay, so.
It's in here somewhere, I'll find it. That's the only one I got right now, but the the basic gist of it is they never got a as your re uh, as your report, there's no Indian report. There's all kinds of stuff that are required by the LCP that are not in this, not in this staff report.
Right, but specifically right now, which which um, just so I can read exactly what you're looking at.
Okay, I go to uh, it's it's a city bio review and it's in the back and it's probably by Dave Crawford.
It's it's page, if you can find the biological review for the project, um, it's on page three. It's at the top of page three of the bio review from two thousand and seventeen. And it's going through the various um. Standards of.
Got it.
After, uh, it's acknowledging that the property is is basically fully built out.
So and now, so I'm looking at that, I'm looking at page three or four, is that where it is?
Yes, that's the part he's.
Okay, but it does not comply with all the provisions of section four dot seven. So finding B is not met. That's John, that's what you're referring to.
That's all I'm reading, yeah.
So if you do.
Something right away.
And and Bonnie, what was your response to this one as far as why that's not something we should consider here?
Because it states right below that, that the LCP does not specifically permit or per the project as proposed recommendation for approval or not or denial is beyond the city bi- city biologist. So the the um, referral includes suggested um, conditions of approval. And the staff's recommendation is to approve the project with those um, suggested conditions of approval that will mitigate um, the trees that were in the line of the pipeline. That was the only potential biological impact identified.
And then as far as since this this particular uh, finding was not in the preview of the biologist, is there someone else who signs off that finding B is met?
That's this, the analysis we provided you in the staff report supports making that finding. And it's up to you whether you agree with it or not.
So I'm looking for a second here.
No, I know.
I want to add a couple of things if you need, uh, just a second.
I'm looking for a second. Do I get a second?
All right. I would like to just continue the discussion a little bit further. So I'll second it for discussion.
All right.
Okay, now.
I think the the question, the the issue that John brought up where the biologist said it's sixty thousand gallons a day and it is now projected to be a hundred thousand, does that cause anybody a problem?
But I think that the um, the applicant's engineer should speak to how the system is designed and how it relates to those comments in the referrals. This is a highly technical area, so that I think it would be best to hear from the applicant's engineer.
Barbara?
I just want to add something that Steve.
Just a second, let's get Barbara first.
Well, she doesn't know what, he asked her the wrong question. It wasn't the city biologist.
Oh, was it?
It was a city geotechnical. It has to do with slope failures, not stuff growing.
And in terms of what what we're citing in the documentation, so we know Barbara's answering, what is that in the city, city geologist report? The geotech review sheet or where is that?
Yes, it is.
Uh, what page in there?
Well, there aren't pages on these things.
Referral, it's on the the back page, the last.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, so it where it's saying um, and PCM HP is sixty six thousand GPD, that that section you're referring to.
Last paragraph.
Yeah, that you want Barbara to address that.
Right.
Okay.
Barbara? Are you there? There you go.
I am here and I'd be delighted to answer that. To be very clear, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, to be very clear, uh, the maximum, which is the peak flow, is eighty five gallons, eighty five thousand gallons per day, twenty five thousand peak flow from Beach Cafe and sixty thousand gallons per day peak flow from the mobile home park. So it's eighty five thousand gallons per day. The treatment plant has an additional capacity in it. And if it didn't have it, then it wouldn't be a good design, because as we know, wastewater is unforgiving. And we want to have additional capacity in it in case something has to be held back or it needs additional treatment. It has nothing to do with the design flow. And as a matter of fact, the design flow is rather high these days compared to what is really uh, being discharged from the mobile home park, simply because it's become more uh, less of a permanent residential community than it has been in the past. But I I hope uh, that will uh, you can understand that there's a huge difference between what we do for redundancy in a treatment plant design and what we do um, in terms, well, and what the actual, I should say, discharges do.
Good question for Barbara. Uh, Barbara, the thirty thousand gallons a day coming from the the cafe, is is that what's coming out now? Or is that what you're projecting it's going to be?
Actually, it's twenty five thousand gallons per day i- is the peak flow from the Beach Cafe.
That this.
And we.
Actually occurring, that twenty five thousand gallons a day is what is actually coming out of there.
Yes, it is as a peak flow. There have been days during the summer when it's it had an excursion over that as high as thirty thousand gallons per day. And in the winter time, it can be as low as six or eight thousand gallons per day. So it does vary widely uh, with the treatment system that we have in uh, that is ready and built and ready to run. There is a great deal of equalization capacity. And what that means is it's able to hold back the wastewater so that it is only discharged according to the permit, which is for eighty five thousand gallons per day. That's the permit with the state.
Thank you, Barbara.
Uh, one, one question that briefly, uh, in in terms of what was signed off by the city, though, that's where um, the city biologist or city geologist, Chris Purdean, signed off at sixty six thousand. So has there been kind of closure on that gap between what the two agencies are saying?
Well, sixty five thousand gallons per day for uh, from the water board, which is the state, and sixty six from Chris. I'm where he got sixty six versus sixty five.
I knew it's at sixty five, not eighty five. For the the totals for the um, the max that you had from, I believe, the state agencies.
Uh, well, from the mobile home park at sixty five thousand gallons per day.
Got it, okay.
But this is both combined system.
That's correct. It is both. I'm I have going back to the geotechnical. I'm not sure of the relevance of that because their concern is for the stability of the soil and the and, you know, to prevent landslides and to have adequate compaction of the soils for construction. And so if that is an error that passed us at some point and we didn't identify it, I apologize for that. But I would really like to point out that the geotechnical does not define the treatment capacity or the wastewater flow.
Well, to to play that back, the geotech is signing off on that you can put a pipe sufficiently large to handle that volume. They're not signing off on as that volume flows through a pipe because it's gonna erode the the soil, the grade, the geology there, correct?
Chris, you are correct, and I'd like to really, I'm glad you brought it back to that pipe because I think it is important to look at it. So the pipe that comes from the Beach Cafe will have the capacity for the peak flow from the Beach Cafe, which is twenty five thousand gallons per day with recognition that there have been days in the past where it can go up to thirty. So that cushion is also in that treatment plant to hold back that. So we'll always go at twenty five thousand gallons per day or less through the pipe that crosses thirty feet over the the creek, which is in a pipe.
Does not geotechnical review consider mostly the effluent, not the capacity of the pipe? It's where you put the water when you get done with it. That's what landslides are caused by, not by pipes. And that's what they review. This guy is a basically a geologist. He's not a hydrologist.
John, at this point, perhaps you were unaware that there is no change at all to the disposal. The disposal capacity is sufficient for the flows as they are now and they will be in the future. And there is no changes to the disposal whatsoever. What we will have in the future, in addition to disposal, which will not be reduced, is we will also be recycling. So most of the year won't even go into the seepage pits. But during the rainy weather, we will put it in the seepage pits.
Yeah, you're gonna spray it on the ground.
Is it is recycled water. It is title twenty two recycled water and it meets the requirements of the state.
No, I understand that, but when they measure the potential for a landslide all the time, we restrict houses on how much money they can, how much water they can dump in the ground because of slippage.
Okay, so where were we? Did we get a motion that was seconded? We did, didn't we, Steve?
For discussion, yeah.
You wanted to, you wanted to add something to your motion, John, or change it in some way?
Well, my, I don't know what came out of my motion, but my motion is that.
You wanted to send it back to have an E I R prepared?
I want to send it back to have an E I R prepared and review of what is required by the LCP as far as alternative sites. And geotechnical and an explanation by the city attorney of what we can condition because we've been told that we can't condition, we can't operate this plant, even though it is operating commercial building in the city of Malibu.
Okay, that's your most Steve. Is that the that's the motion you seconded?
And I'm open to any suggest.
Steve, Steve, is that motion you seconded?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I want to get some clarity about what this this motion is exactly. So the motion is to deny the project without prejudice. And then the reason for that, you said, is is that there were the alternatives analysis? That did not present sufficient alternatives analysis?
And they did not present a adequate M and D that should be denied and become an E I R.
Yeah, oh, but there's two different parts here. First is the denial of of the were there any other grounds for why you can't make the findings for the CDP? Any of the the variances or anything else?
Yeah, I do not think that the the Esha variances for the trees was proper. And you put me on the spot on all the different things. There's so many of them because we my basic gist is we don't, we haven't been told the facts.
Okay, I mean, if we're gonna deny the project, we need to make specific findings about why it's why it's denied and what evidence that's based on. If instead you want this brought back with additional information to provide that basis, then you can make a motion to continue this item to have that brought back. In addition, if if you're requiring in E I R, then we need to know what needs to be studied. And what what how was insufficient? What significant impact?
Just a second. John, I think Trevor may be giving you an out there.
I was gonna say, John, that the concept of continuing this, I mean, here, I'm strug- I'm struggling to figure out this project is almost done. Right? So I mean, no matter what the hell we are, we could, how are we gonna stop this thing? How are you gonna change it?
My my point is, and I continuation, maybe the next motion comes up. My point is we got a staff report that's inadequate because it's inadequate because the city let this get built without the proper studies. Like, for example, the Indian study, without any reports that are official. They're just what Steve hired. Okay, no city review really. And we got a staff report saying it's done and here's what we know. Okay, well, I want to just have it come back and have us know what we is real. The alternatives, the the Esha report on that forest. Can you can you put a pipeline through there? It's just all we got was their staff person saying.
John, John, I wanted, really, this is a motion.
Okay, I wanted to make a motion to have it if Steve will go along with it, to have it come back with a full city review of what is required of a project that has not been completed. And then we could decide, we can decide when we'll look away and when we won't.
Thank you, John. Steve, that that you're seconding that motion?
I would accept that change, yes.
Okay, alright, so now we're going to discuss that motion. Is there further discussion from David or Chris? Alright, let me give you my take on this thing. I think what happened here, and this goes back a long way. Regional Water Quality Control Board was sending cease and desist letters to these people. They're talking about, you know, the, I don't know what whether the practicalities of it were, but my guessing is that the in the back of everybody's mind is we're gonna ribtag all these houses. We're gonna close this park down unless we can finally get the 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 water quality done right. And if I had to choose between fighting Regional Water Quality Control Board and trying to get something through the city on a on a an E I R or a mitigated negative deck, I would go along and do what the Regional Water Quality Control Board told me to do. And then I would fight it out at the city when that that time came. And I think that's, you know, that'd be my guess. I'm speculating, but I think that's probably what happened here. Secondly, this is an issue which has cried out for solution for years and years and years to get an adequate wastewater treatment plant for this park and it's here and we can't let it go through because we're offended that they didn't come to us first.
Let me comment on that.
It seems to me that this is an issue that needs to be resolved. Really, it is a fait accompli we were we were put with. Yeah, it kind of rankles, but by God, this is a solution that has been a long, long time coming. Needs to be taken care of.
By the way.
That's why I'm going to vote no not to continue it, but go ahead, John.
Okay, in two thousand and five, Surfside News had a picture on its front page of sewage running down the street. Okay, the city goes, okay, we got a problem here. Let's fix it. We went through a whole ring and roll just like this to fix it. The the planning commission voted, the city council voted, this is the fix. Here we are fifteen years later with a failure and a regional water board because we slid on that. Now is our chance to fix it. And what we've said is in this hearing, Bonnie differs with what Steve says. We've said all along, the city's been looking at this and intimated that they and Steve claims they knew about it. Well, you say, oh, let's just ignore the city because it's too hard to deal with. Let's just let the water board do it. Well, they could have come to us four years ago and this CDP would have been issued. But no, it was built without any proper review under the LCP, which is required, okay? It's required and said, oh gee, we finished it because you say they want to get around us and do the water board. Well, they had five years to do that. And you're saying that with all this time the city spent and all these reviews, they couldn't have come with a staff report a couple of years ago? No, the other problem is probably they didn't want to do what is required. That's all. Or hire or pay for an Indian or pay for a biologist or pay for a E I R or pay for whatever is required under a normal permit. It's not permissible for us as a body of the city to say, gee, I would have slid it around the corner with a water board and then 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 try to blow it by the planning commission. That's not what the law is all about and that's not why we're here. So all I'm asking is come back and tell us what is required. Tell us what our rights are as far as we can't set limits on this because Trevor can't tell us what we can do. So once we know what we can do and there is a question about.
I I don't sure what you want. When you're looking for the city attorney's office here, I told you you can make conditions on this project to mitigate environmental impacts on it. So that's required and that's something you can put in here.
No, I'm talking about operating. Okay, you're saying, oh gee, that's the some other department's problem.
Not a C U P application. This is what we're talking about here is the coastal development permit for this, right?
Yeah, David.
No, I mean, I unfortunately, I think that, you know, we're in a position to do what you were suggesting, Jeff, which is approve something that was done in a not straightforward way. And accept the fact that it is time to fix it better than it will be if we don't do this. And not doing it is just not a practical alternative at the moment. So I'm I'm where you are.
Well, I just want to comment, this could be appealed.
Just a second, just a second, John. Steve had his hand up.
Real quick question, Bonnie, you know, the the inspection, whoever the housing, whoever did the inspection of of what they've built so far, how close does the inspection that they do coincide with the inspection the city would have had to do if they were doing the work? Do we know? I mean, is there?
I don't I don't know how the two inspections compare. Perhaps you could have a include a condition of approval that would have the have the environmental health staff do a physical inspection that would confirm that everything was built according to the the conditions and the the specifications that were reviewed as part of the plan check.
See, the one of the problems is that they H C D has its own code and I'm speaking because my son has a place out in in the Point Dume Club. Point Dume Club is gets rebuilt, houses get moved, you know, new ones get come in all the time. And it's H C D that does the inspections all along. They've got the whole code that they apply and you've got to meet what they say. And some of them are different than ours because in some cases, for example, you you can't have wood within a certain distance of your neighbor because it, these things are designed, these codes are designed because they're they're talking about mobile home parks, right? So there's just slightly different rules. But H C D comes around and they do the inspections, just like everybody else. You know, except it's H C D instead of the city that's coming around. They've got their own code, not not necessarily the city's code, the different code. It's a statewide code.
And we preempted from from assuming that 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 responsibility. So if H C D has the control responsibility of it, they would get to do it and we can't say that we would, you know, see that.
We know nobody's ever told us that they inspected it. How do you know they didn't, they didn't decide, well, let's slide it by those guys too?
I mean, that's.
One at a time, Trevor.
We don't deal with the the building permits here. What we're dealing with is entitlements of what they're allowed to build, how they actually build it to make sure that it matches those plans that's controlled by the inspectors that they meet the building codes and applicable, you know, requirements, you know, that's that's to be done by H C D or by our building officials after the entitlements that you guys approve go through.
Trevor, could the environmental health staff under the auspices of the local coastal program inspect for consistency with the local coastal program?
I I don't think we can just, we we can just take over inspection, you know, requirements. I mean, we can impose conditions about how the project is run or to mitigate in the environmental impact. But if we're talking about inspectors, the question is, why is that, you know, required to use our inspectors versus, you know, what's required by the state, you know?
I don't mean instead of, I mean, as just part of compliance with the LCP.
Yeah. I I think there could be potential preemption problems. If you want to include something along those lines, I would include a caveat to the extent allowed under state law.
How do you deal with the fact that part of it is not under their jurisdiction? And how do we know that they actually inspected it as it was being built? They I had nobody here tonight say they know of any inspections by anybody else.
Anybody else, but who?
By by the whatever you call the trailer park people.
I I get it. It's a big problem. You know, we don't know what was put in there, what was inspected as this went on, you know, how do we know, you know, what's under the ground? I mean, I don't know the answer to that. We don't, but it's not something that that we control. All we control is what we say they're allowed to put in there. And then it becomes a it becomes a question of whether those inspections were done properly under H C D's requirements or under our requirements, depending on, you know, who has jurisdiction.
Who has jurisdiction over the restaurant? I've never gotten that answer.
I don't know the answer to that tonight. We can look into that, but I I don't know. But again, it doesn't affect the decision on the entitlements. It's just a an issue to deal with in terms of who's giving final side off for operation.
Okay, so the motion is to to bring this matter back for further something. Have you got a date certain or do we have a date uncertain on that, Bonnie?
Um, we can specify a date certain. We just need to know exactly what it is that you want us to to bring back. But I would say it would at least it would it would be at least a month.
Okay, is is there a date you want to give us for that or do you need to know what? I mean, the answer I think is more stuff, but I'm not sure exactly. Do you want to? Do you want to do it as a date uncertain? Does it make a difference?
I I would say that it would need to probably be I don't have my calendar right in front of me. We have already noticed for the May eighteenth agenda and well, that would be the soonest we could do it would be the May eighteenth agenda. That's approximately a month.
Isn't that the one you're telling us it's going to be the the one that's gonna make us wish for a quick death?
Yes.
Eighteenth, yeah.
That's the one.
Well, I would suggest you do the next one then.
Well, I mean, there's a water quality issue. There's a cease and desist order in place. So we're trying, it's in everyone's best interest. In my opinion, to try to move this forward, notwithstanding the circumstances under which the project has been already mostly constructed. But.
So let's let's say we continue, the the motion would be to continue it to May eighteenth. Is that acceptable to you, John and Steve?
I think it's a little aggressive because there's a lot of questions to be answered, but.
Okay, well, it's your motion. You tell me what it is you want to, you want to.
I'd rather do the meeting after that. Is that okay? With August. Eighteenth is gonna be a long one. This hasn't been a short one.
Yeah, they never are.
There's been an awful lot of information provided. There's there has been biological inspections. The there have been cultural resources reports. Staff has reviewed all of these. There has been a complete review of everything by all of the other city specialists. So there's there's not a lot of other information that.
Maybe you want to leave it in discretion of staff when they have the answers to the questions you're looking at. I think the ones that I have that you mentioned were you want to alternatives analysis for citing it elsewhere. Further justification for the Esha variants, further geotechnical analysis, especially related to the the flows. Were there other items that you want additional research on?
I just the depth, the pipes were put down. There was the documentation says three inches, which seemed very low. And so just confirming what depth piping is at. If you want me to cite a page where that was on the dock, I can do that for you in a second.
I think.
Like the answer.
One at a time, one at a time. Bonnie?
I I was just gonna suggest that if you have a question about the piping depth that the applicant is available and right here to answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think Bonnie Bonnie's trying to move this to comply with the regional water bu- board and also to improve the water quality down there. So I don't think we want to delay this more than necessary, so whatever questions we have, there are additional ones, you know, let's get it to staff so they can get the answers and the information you want brought back, so we can deal with this, you know?
Well, I just want to remind you, we spent four years dealing with the water board before we did a settlement with them.
Okay, so let's, uh, I, I, I think we've hammered this enough, um, can we get a vote on, this is on the motion to, to bring it back, right?
Yeah, what day can we pick, when Bonnie's ready?
No.
We, that, if we don't set a date, then I, I would prefer to set a date so that there's, it's not necessary to renotice and if we needed to continue, then we could, but, um, again, I, I.
You want to set an earlier date, Bonnie, when you think it, it could be done and then it gets continued if the information's not ready?
Eighteenth is the soonest that we could do anything, but.
Why don't, why don't we do this, if, if we set the eighteenth and, and if you're not ready or haven't got the information or you haven't figured out what it is that we want or whatever it is, then you can continue it on from that date, right, without having to renotice it or do anything, so why don't we just set May eighteenth then? And, at, at least, as the motion, I'm not, I'm not advocating because I'm not going to support it.
Well, I'll go with that, I gotta ask Bonnie one last question. On the eighteenth, do we have anything really big that's a critical? Is there any, like, LCP amendments and things like that?
No, we don't have any legislative matters on the eighteenth, but we have a lot of other projects that have been waiting a long time.
Yeah, the next meeting, do we have a lot scheduled?
We're working on all of that.
Okay. I'll go along with the eighteenth, and Steve will.
All right. I'll support the eighteen, sooner we get it done, the better.
Tonight would be the night.
Yeah, I just, in, in your tonight comment, in, I just think we should accept the reality that this is done in a way that none of us like, but it's done. We're not going to learn anything on the eighteenth that's going to cause us to not approve this project, I think we're kidding ourselves, we're wasting time. John, I understand the forty-seven things that are inadequate, on the eighteenth, we're going to approve it. Why are we going to put ourselves through this between now and then, when we all know it's kind of a foregone conclusion that we really may not like how we got there, but we know what the conclusion is going to be?
My answer would be, we will be informed enough to put rational conditions on the project and we are not in that position right now.
Right, so. Would you consider, Joe, what, give me an example of a condition you would think you'd put on it?
Who, me?
John? Yeah.
Uh, I would say we probably want to put some operating conditions on this, uh, you know, what, we should got to resolve the capacity and what happens if they go over it and things like that. We do it on every project that's a public works project. In this case, it's just, oh, it's done, let them do it the way they want it. We need to know what that is.
I think, I think you should consider that the, the regional board has, has gone to a lot of trouble about the cease and desist order process and they're going to be watching this very closely, there's extensive monitoring that's required. The last thing they're going to want is, is this thing exceeding its capacity.
And you're telling me, or Steve Dahlberg is telling me, that you've got several quarterly reports from them saying that they were watching the construction of this project and they never bothered to pick up the phone and ask you, was it approved?
They, I, I can't speak for the regional board, but their purview is water quality and I, it's not necessarily our permitting process. The state agencies aren't always as, um, collaborative or, and communicative as you would expect.
Actually, well.
I can make that same argument about the MRCA and we make them follow the rules.
Okay, the, the fact is that, that, I, I'm not going to do this, I am not going to do this, we're going to call for a vote. Kathleen?
Uh, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Oh man, I hate to vote yes. Yes.
Chair Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Wile?
No.
Commissioner Marks?
I, I think we need more information just to make sure everything's good, so I vote yes.
All right.
Motion passes.
I hope the Regional Water Quality Board was listening.
I would urge the commissioners that they have any more information they want, that it was not specifically, that I did not relay at the time of the motion, that that's communicated to staff so we can get everything before the commission at the next, the May eighteenth meeting.
Okay, that concludes item, whatever it was, that was an item four A, we're now at item five B, which is another follow-up application, this is for the coastal development permit number eight nineteen dash oh eighty-four, follow-up application for the replacement of a lifeguard tower on the bluff at El Matador State Beach. State Department of Parks and Recreation, um, staff report, please.
Uh, good evening, can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. Good evening, Chair Jennings, members of the planning commission, the project before you, uh, this evening will permit the work that took place under emergency coastal development permit number nineteen zero zero, or sorry, zero twelve, uh, which is approved in May two thousand and nineteen, which allowed the creation of a, um, packed earth pad and placement of a freestanding lifeguard tower at El Matador State Beach, which is part of the larger Robert H Meyer Memorial State Beach. Uh, the ECDP approved a smaller lifeguard tower, um, and given the needs of the area, a slightly larger uh, lifeguard tower was actually placed on site and I'll get more in that, um, in a minute. Um, next slide, please. Okay, um, this parcel, um, contains public amenities for the beach area, uh, including parking and trail access to the beach. The purpose of the lifeguard tower is to increase public safety and protect the natural resources at El Matador. Um, there's been, uh, and a pretty significant increase in visitors to the state beach, um, putting themselves and the sensitive resources in the area, um, at greater risk. Um, and the lifeguard tower, tower will provide an area for lifeguards to oversee and immediately respond to, um, aquatic rescues, medical aids, um, and other incidents on the beach, which are currently hindered by delayed response times. Um, lifeguards working, the tower can communicate with park visitors to reduce violations by interpreting the rules and regulations as well. Next slide, please. The lifeguard tower, um, as you can see here, is placed just, um, just outside of the existing trail from the parking lot down to the beach. The lifeguard tower was originally proposed, um, along with a larger parking lot expansion project, uh, which is under review by the Coastal Commission as part of their existing, um, public works plan. However, due to the extended timeline, um, of that plan, the installation of this tower was requested under a separate application and emergency application to the city due to, like I said, the increasing amount of visitors to the beach, um, and the need for lifeguards and enforcement of the rules and protection of everything, um, at the state beach. The creation of the pad and the placement of the tower was deemed an emergency to provide these protections before the start of the traditionally busy summer season before Memorial Day. The proposed location was selected for, uh, the visual vantage points as well as the least impact, uh, to bluff coastal vegetation. Um, the spot that was chosen, um, was deemed by the, um, applicant biologist to be ninety-five percent bare. And that is visible, uh, from, uh, aerial photography as well as the site visit that was conducted. Furthermore, the proposed location, um, does not impact any, um, access to the trail, um, or the parking lot, um, and is visible from a bunch of different areas around the state beach, which is, um, contributes to the achievement of the objectives of the project. The scope of work is to, oh, sorry, next slide, please. Uh, the scope of work is to, again, permit that work which occurred under the ECDP. Um, and that includes a creation of a flat packed earth and aggregate pad, um, roughly two hundred and forty square feet and, uh, one uh, foot tall at its maximum height, um, on the kind of path side, um, which has been stabilized on the north side by sandbags and now straw waddles. Um, placement of a freestanding, uh, steel lifeguard, like lifeguard tower with an approximately eight foot tall antenna um, in a previously disturbed area adjacent to the public beach access trail, um, which is also, it's been placed approximately fifteen feet from the bluff top edge and secured or rebar. There's a forty, forty-two inch tall plastic temporary fencing on the northwest and south sides of the tower. Um, and this project does not include any landscaping, fuel modification, grading or outdoor lighting. Uh, next slide, please. It should be noted that no permanent foundations were installed, this tower could be removed at any time. Um, and the pad, um, consisted of approximately eight cubic feet of imported earth. Um, as you can see, kind of from, uh, this image, there were a couple alternative locations considered for the lifeguard tower. Again, the, uh, location that was chosen, um, was chosen for its vantage points above the beach. Um, you can see, um, a very large area of the state beach below, um, and, you know, around on the flat pad bluff. Um, and the least amount of impact to, um, environmental resources, given that this is located right next to the trail and was already barren and free of vegetation. Next slide, please. Um, the next slide that is on its way, um, is going to show us, uh, here we go, an elevation of the tower, um, which you'll be able to see in some images here in a minute, um, with the exception of the antenna. Um, and as an aside, um, the placement of the tower and creation of that pad on top of the existing dirt just required some small, um, mechanical equipment and did not disrupt any other, um, resources outside of the existing trail. Next slide, please. Um, the project is visible from other areas within the state beach area, um, and a little bit from Pacific Coast Highway. Um, but it is sighted, uh, behind the existing, uh, the view of the existing trail he- or trail signs, um, portable restrooms and trash receptacles, as you can see here on the left-hand side, um, are all those things I just mentioned with the lifeguard tower behind. And then walking down the path, you get to this picture on the right-hand side, um, where you can see those sandbags. Um, I should also mention that the, uh, state beach staff has already been, we've already asked them to replace those sandbags um, with, um, something that's not plastic, canvas only, um, and they are working on that. Um, next slide, please. The towers are painted a bright blue, which, um, is compatible with the blue water and sky in the background when the tower is viewed from the highway. The tower is more visible when viewed from the beach, as you can see in these images, however, the purpose of the tower is, um, some increased visibility so that it can be clearly identifiable to visitors and users of the beach and trails for safety purposes. Um, and to be clear, the, that image on the right that was just there is from the, the nearest residence, um, that, the closest residence that could see this tower. Just pretty, pretty far in the distance. Um, in conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of the resolution and the approval of the CDP, um, I'm available for questions, there is, um, uh, somebody from the Department of Parks and Recreation available as well, um, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, disclosures, John, you got your hand up?
None.
Steve?
None.
Chris?
None.
David?
None.
None for me. Okay, uh, John?
Uh, what is the dimensions of the tower, the building on the tower? You know?
The, the main box of the tower or the footprint?
The main box of the tower, the, the, the actual building.
I could find that out for you.
The reason why I'm asking is, uh, it seems like it could be covered under the shed exemption and be an over the counter permit. If it's ten by twelve.
We wouldn't issue any building permits for that anyway, but, um, that's a building permit question, not a planning approval question.
Yeah, planning, planning's exempt in those cases.
No.
Um, the other question I have is.
Get a planning approval for a shed.
What?
Yeah.
You get a planning approval for a shed, it's exempt from a coastal develop, uh, coastal development permit.
I would just walk up to the counter and they hand it to you.
Right, but you.
I'm wondering why we're hearing it, but the other question is, at Zuma Beach, there's probably twenty, thirty towers and they move them down to the end every year and they move them around all over the place. We don't have to give them permits, do we?
There's never been, there's never been a tower in this location.
Well, okay, um.
As far as I know.
Yeah, but there's probably never been a town, okay, I'm just wondering what the big deal is here. And the other, last question I have is, is it fifty feet from the bluff and do we need to give them a, a, a variance, which I'm perfectly willing to do?
It's fifteen feet because it doesn't have a foundation, it, it only needs to be fifteen feet, um, and I did take my tape measure out and measured the feet to the edge of the bluff.
Okay, so unless anybody has any questions, I move approval of staff.
Why don't we have a public hearing and see if we.
Okay, well, I thought they were there for questions.
What's that?
I thought the parks people were here for questions only.
Well, we still have to let the public, you're big on that, John.
Um.
All right, so, um, I'm going to open the public hearing. Kathleen, do we have any speakers?
We have the applicant, Danielle LaFleur.
Is it just, just for questions or they wish to make a presentation?
Um, I am not certain.
Can we find out, Danielle?
Hi, uh, good evening, this is Danielle LaFleur, I am here just for questions, thank you very much.
Just here for questions, all right, did anybody have any questions for Ms. LaFleur? Hearing none, we'll see whether there's anybody else that wants to speak to the commission on this item?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, fine, then we'll close the public hearing, we'll be back at the commission table.
I move the item be approved, as staff recommend, recommends.
Is there a second?
I'll stack it.
Okay, I, I was just going to say, I, I thought this was about rescue, but I, I see it's now about rescue and, and hall monitors, so making sure that nobody does anything bad on the beach. Okay, so call the roll, Kathleen, let's, let's see what we can do.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yeah.